Good morning, August 5th. This is a scheduled meeting of the Griggs County Commission. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to roll call. Avriel.
Here.
Tranby.
Here.
Zorn. Here.
Edlin.
Here.
And Wakefield's here. Have a look at the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve the agenda by Edlin. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Tranby. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Agenda approved. Have a look at the July 22nd meeting minutes. Sam, anything?
No.
Nothing there?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes and dispense with the reading.
We have a motion by Edlin to approve the July 22nd meeting minutes as presented and dispensed with the reading. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Avriel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Minutes approved. Move on to the bills. Sam, is there anything that stands out in the bills that we should know about?
Uh, no.
I'll make a motion to accept the invoices for the bills.
We have a motion by Edlin to accept the bills as set forward. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Avriel. I do have a question. What's the $8,8700 in '87, '84, '84 for county extension expense?
It's a salary.
Okay. That's what we're got. Paying back the NDSU salary for their salary expenditure.
Yep.
Any further discussion on the bills? Barring no further discussion, we'll move on to a roll call vote. Aye to be positive, nay to the negative. Avriel.
Aye.
Tranby.
Aye.
Zorn.
Aye.
Edlin.
Aye.
Wakefield votes aye. Bills approved. Monthly office reports. Nothing to vote on there, just take a look at them. That's your discretion.
No.
Anybody have any questions on the office reports? Wayne.
Yes, sir. Paul. Paul, there's a contract to reduce some core samples and different things that come into 26.
Yep, so in the packet there's a pavement testing and pavement design for County Highway 26 from Port Coato and west 1.34 miles. So they're gonna have Ron InterTech go out and do a falling weight deflectometer testing, which they drop a weight and have sensors that respond to see what the strength of the existing pavement is. And then we'll actually have our staff go out and do cores or for my, or for per section. The intel stuff is a different section than the stuff that went out to the elevator. And then Chad Peterson and our County City Optimum could give a pavement designer report. I guess we want to do this as separate to see what scope of the project will be on whether we need to do widening of going out to the elevator because that would... We scoped enough in the fee for that that we put into the state. We want to make sure that we're not asking for more design for the full project than we need to. So we just did this as a small contract to get started and it's hourly. And the hours estimate is on the back of that as well. Do we have any questions on what we're doing up there?
I think I had an email that stated that you would reimburse 100%.
Yep. And then there's a, they sent, the state reviewed it too, since they're funding it. I sent our contract to them and they conferred with it, pending county approval, of course. And then they sent us the form that we have to fill out for reimbursement on C-Boy Sustained.
So $10,400?
$10,450. And then $800 for Ron to... Since we had a big group of projects for different counties, Ron InterTech had their fee just down at $800 for their, running their truck over there.
100% reimbursed, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Need a motion?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So we'll need a motion to approve the KLJ miscellaneous professional services agreement on project 2403-01044. Motion by Avriel.
Second.
Second by Edlin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Is this on DocuSign or do you need the physical copy?
Physical copy.
You've got it.
Agreement approved.
Okay.
Thank you. Where's that at?
On my printer.
Oh. Wayne, anything else? Township road and mileage certification? What's that?
Uh, that's mine.
That's yours?
Yep.
Sounds like Wayne's.
Could be. You can sit in here for it. I just need your signature, John, on that mileage certification.
We'll need a motion to approve the county township road and mileage certifications.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tranby. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Second by Zorn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Mileage certifications approved.
So I'll just have you stop by and sign that one too.
Okay. Old courthouse, new courthouse.
I don't have anything yet. I, I have... Yeah, I don't know. It's pretty... I made a couple more calls. And what you've... There's a lot when you start trying to... Yeah, we can, there's stuff we can do, but there's stuff that it opens doors to. And I don't know. I'm trying to figure out some more stuff on it, but that's kind of where I'm at with it. I only, I actually may, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I got a hold of one phone caller yesterday, or one galley last week, and she sent me an email. And I read through it and it's... Yeah, I gotta, I gotta try to call her and figure out exactly what the language is.
I did receive an email, August 1st, on a State Historical Society has $150,000 grant available for restoration, stabilization, and protection of historical properties. I don't know the details on it. I didn't, I didn't go any further. I did send it off to Rod. And applications are due October 2nd.
That's, that's one of them that I read, Steph. And the language, and I'm wondering is just what ties are to us? You know, what are we signing up for? I mean, if it's a grant and we can fix up what we have, I think it's, you know... But, you know, is there, is there strings attached?
Right.
So, but that's, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay. Yes. Thanks, Rod.
Yep.
Anything else? Counties Providing Technology, CPT County Software, page 22.
We did have a meeting with them to just kind of break down all of the fees and everything like that for how this all works. This is how they got it for us for if we needed budgeting.
And this was outside the budget. So we projected $65,000, I think, and it's 32,000 on the initial software.
And then they will do... So it's kind of looking like we will have the financials and the payroll transferred by January 1st so that we just have one... It's already starting the year off in the payroll system. And then we would transfer over all the tax stuff by August of next year so that we do estimated tax statements on the new program. So that's kind of what they're, they're looking at. So I just wanted you guys to be aware of the fees and stuff.
I thought Madison had something to bring.
I didn't see anything.
So the first year of charges comes to $30,000. $32,000 was initial setup here. We, I think last meeting we said $65,000.
Sixty, yeah, sixty or sixty-five.
So I think to save on this year's budget, we should, we already appropriated $65,000. I think we should pay initial setup and the, and the purchase and the monthly fees for one year out of that. Then next year for the 26 budget, we'll budget the annual, the monthly charges.
Okay, say it one more time.
Okay. So this was going to come out of the what fund?
ARPA.
ARPA.
I was hoping, sorry.
And we were talking $65,000 originally.
Correct.
Now it's only $32,000.
Yep.
Plus the fees for, the monthly fees for the year come to $30,000. So I think we should combine them together, use that ARPA funds to pay for the first year.
Okay.
In next year's budget, we'll put it into the budget as a monthly charge.
Basically pay for this first two, two years is basically what you're saying? Well, the installation, the first year.
Yes.
Yeah.
For what we, what we originally, initially last month, last meeting thought was going to be the cost of it is now the cost plus the monthly charges. Yeah. So we overestimated by $30,000. We've already dedicated that money. I think we should keep the...
It's $50,000 ARPA funds.
What's that?
Is it $50,000 ARPA funds are left?
I thought it was 66. I could be wrong.
I know.
I read it. I thought I read it. I thought there was $100,000 ARPA funds, but 50 of it's already used for...
We thought $50,000 was going to be used for those radios, but it didn't come to that. It came to 30, 30 something. So the ARPA, yeah, ARPA is actually in your budget. And there is 65,204.
That's correct.
Yep.
And that will more than cover the initial cost and installation.
First year, yeah.
Okay. And that doesn't, so that, that will be dedicated then to this CPT as we did last meeting.
Speaking of the software, I think Madison had something that she wanted to...
Yes.
Bring with the software.
So I let Tyler Technologies know that they lost the bid after last meeting. And he did some reworking, actually. For, because he asked what the biggest concern was, and I let him know that that $168,000 was just too much for us. And so he did a little bit of reworking on it. So these are the costs over... So what he did, he split it between three years so that that 168 is divided over 20, 25, 26, and 27. It is obviously still more expensive than CPT, but...
In the beginning, but in the long run, after 10 years, it was more, CPT was more expensive?
Yeah.
Or after five years even?
Yeah. But I just want to present this to you just because he did some reworking for us. So I just want to present it one last time before you made your final decision.
We made our final decision last meeting.
Well, contract hasn't signed yet, though.
We made the final decision last meeting. We can't make decisions going forward for future years. We're budgeting for...
This was a three-year contract for future years.
Yeah, CPT is actually a three-year contract too.
No, we're buying, we're buying the software upfront. We have the ability to back out of the monthly charges.
Not for three years. According to the contract with CPT, it's a three-year contract. Is that correct?
We don't have the contract yet, but...
Right.
Yeah.
It is a three-year contract.
But it is, yeah. They did, in the one email, they said this is a three-year contract.
Yeah, but we, first of all, this was already a settled matter. It's right in the minute meetings here.
What is it?
We voted, we voted on this. This was not part of the budget. This is by far the cheapest, the best deal for the taxpayers. That's what we determined last meeting. When something is decided, why do we keep going back over and over and over again? This is, this is of, this is of no benefit to the citizens. If we're going to, if we're going to do that whole open bidding process where it's like an auction then, well, they're cheaper now. What's your bid? Oh, now you're cheaper. Now you're cheaper. Now you're cheaper. That's not how it works. Never has, shouldn't, can't.
And to figure, I did plug some numbers in for the Tyler. It's $4.11 more for, for taxes on the $100,000 home. So it's not that much of a tax increase as to go with the Tyler versus the CPT and to have upgraded software and work with window based instead of remaining with DOS. Which I think a DOS software, going from DOS to DOS, it's a waste of taxpayers' money to not improve software versus, versus staying, buying old software again. If you're going to spend money, buy upgrades. And prices are equivalent. Like I said, in 10 years, CPT is actually higher than Tyler. So I disagree with the taxpayers' money. It'd be, it'd be more spent better upgrading the software. It is 2025. It's all in software.
This year's upgraded software. So any more discussion on this?
The DOS is not upgraded software.
This was settled, this was settled last meeting.
We, we still can make a motion and move forward with this new presentation on this. Nothing states that we cannot.
Well, you'll have to get rid of the, we've already accepted the CPT, so we'll have to get rid of that first. So you can't have, you can't have two softwares.
Okay. What about that?
Well, the only, the only worries me is will CP... I guess I'm looking long-term is, worries me is most everyone with Tyler, of course, you know, that mostly the state did. Will they, will they be in business four or five years from now? If you follow me, CP, you know? That's, if, I'm just, it's a legitimate concern, you know? Will they be, you know, whereas Tyler has been in for a while around here, so I'm just...
We, we're spending, we're spending $32,000 for this, for the software. I mean, this is, this is a no-brainer, guys. I don't understand why we're arguing over some that was settled last meeting.
I, well... I make a motion to no longer go with CPT. Let's see where it goes.
I mean, that, that's not how we do business, but we'll do that. There's a motion on the table to do away with CPT. Is there a second to that motion? Barring no second, motion dies. Can we move on now? 2025 budget. So... Just to review, when we started this process, it was agreed upon by the majority that we tried to hold to a 3.2% increase. Is that correct?
Yeah. Because of the, the 3.2% raises.
Okay. Well... If you go to page four.
Before we go too far, I'd like to bring up the extension one again. Because last time you guys... Last time John mentioned we can only do 3.2%. Did you change the budget for that or did you leave it the way it was?
Nope, his went down to the 3.2.
I didn't say we could only do it. I said we did what we did with the other budgets.
So...
So now that Stephanie's in charge, we're going to move on to a different subject rather than the overall budget.
Well, these guys, they're sitting here, Zorn.
I understand that. So are we. So we were sent some information concerning what our obligation is.
And you viewed this two years ago. And I guess you guys volunteered two years ago to hear it, Josh and Rod.
And the century, what we were sent by the extension was a guideline. It wasn't, it wasn't century code. It was guidelines that was taken from a, it was taken from a Senate bill. The century code still holds true for how we deal with the NDSU budget. It's laid out here in 113806, budgeting for extension work. This is the latest, this is the latest century code. "When the Board of County Commissioners is authorized to make a levy for the employment of an extension agent, the board should provide an annual budget that stipulates the salary of the agent, field and office expenses, and allowance of staff." It goes on to say in paragraph two of this, "The extension agent's annual salary adjustment must be agreed upon by the Board of County Commissioners and the Extension Service based on the agent's annual performance and consideration of county and Extension Service budget limitations." So let me read it again. "And a consideration of county and Extension Service budget limitations." What we did here was we gave him a raise. We gave him a raise consummate with the rest of the raises that took place in the county. And that was fully within our power to do that. I don't understand why we're here arguing over something that was already done.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
The only suggestion I got, and I understand he needs more help, and that's good, that he's trying to get it. I'm going to make a suggestion that's probably not in many's favor, but what if we took, since we don't have a tax director yet, what if we cut the tax director back down to part-time and took some of that to give him more help?
That, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what we're talking about here. Well, I think we're talking about his raise is what I was sent the information on. It wasn't...
You're talking about, you're talking about the raise here?
We have two pronged issues here that we would like to bring forward to the board.
The only information I was sent was concerning the...
The raise.
The raise. And that's what made it into the budget here.
Yeah.
And again, if I, if you, we're on solid ground as far as determining the salary of the, of the agent. And I just read you the century code. What you sent me was a Senate bill and it was guidelines.
It's, I mean, that, that was law about, that was turned into law.
I just read you the law.
There's, the Senate bill...
I just read you the law. This is right, this is out of the, out of the latest, this is out of the latest...
I, I did hear you, sir.
Okay, okay.
And I did, I did read that.
So that is the law.
You know, if there are, is there county, but it talks about county budget limitations and Extension Service limitations.
Yes.
The other prong of this is Jeff is an employee record of NDSU, which is state office.
Yep.
And the state legislature signs a bill on what raises will be for the biennial. They did a six and four, and that information is in there for state employees.
So I'll, I'll, I'll read you right from, from section 21. And the headline of that for what you're talking about is the, is the raises. The headline, the headline, guideline is state employees compensation adjustments slash guidelines. It's not law, it's guidelines. And...
O and B, you know, they give us...
I understand, I understand. But the century code is our, century code is our guidance. And it says that it is subject to our budget limitations. Our budget limitations are, of course, financial. And if we deem there's not money, we did give him a raise. That was fine. We deemed there was a need for a raise, but we didn't give him what NDSU stated he should get because that's not the way this works. We get to set the salary that we want to pay. And you can take that up with the state's attorney or somebody else, but the rules, the century code is straightforward.
I'm asking the board to honor the raise that we have given Jeff for this year. I have determined Jeff that he was a high performer. And I have put in 4.5% for a salary increase starting July 2024. For July 2025, since our years are split, we put in for budgetary purposes 5%. It's a total, we just took six and four, an average 5%. The legislature again will determine a number that will come to the state agencies for salary compensation for state employees. And we'll follow those guidelines.
And that starts at half a year end?
Half a year end, correct.
See, see, again, it's guidelines. It isn't law.
So I'm asking the board to honor the base policy agreement and according to the budget, what has been submitted by extension. If you have questions, I'm free to answer those questions.
So you're, you're talking 3.2 and you want 5? That the bottom line here?
We're talking about $400 here.
I mean, that's, that's my point. There was, it's, we, we had 3.2 and you want 5. That's right?
Well, we're putting an estimate of 5 into the budget. For July 1st, 2025 would be, when that would be...
So...
Implemented.
Into one, thank you very much.
$400 is the difference.
That, that's, that's not, that is, that's not the issue. The issue is who gets to decide. Because once we give up the ability to decide and make the budget calculations and we hand that over to NDSU, we're no longer in control of the financing of Griggs County. And that is, that we, that can't be. We are...
If there, if there was a true budget limitation where we were up against the four mills, we would, that would be in my mind and something I would talk to you guys about beforehand if there was a budget limitation. I am very sensitive to that, John. Like, I would, I would care about that very much.
You're missing my point. We are, we are, have the ability to spend the Griggs County taxpayers' money, not NDSU. NDSU is, we're not subservient to the wishes of NDSU. You can't even give us a number. You're saying, trust me, it'll be in 25 and we'll, we'll give you the number. That's, that's not the way it is. We control the budget. We control the taxpayers' dollars. We safeguard the taxpayers' dollars. We enter into the budget right now, what we're going to spend, and that becomes gospel. And the dollar amount is, means nothing. It, the, the whole purpose of this is who's in control of this.
So what you need is a motion for us to accept the salary that you present in the budget.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm asking for.
I will make a motion to accept the salary the Extension Office presented in the budget. I will make a motion to accept the salary the extension office presented in the budget.
We have a motion by Stephanie to accept the salary that the extension office entered into the budget. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that one.
Second by Tranby. Discussion. Once we give.
How, what is the difference?
Once, once we give the raise to. The agent, the five percent. How are we going to then deny the raises to everybody else?
That's what my concern is.
This is so silly.
Remember, this, he's a state employee and this person is a county. And then your, the other people are county employees. It's just like.
They all work under the same, they all work under the same guidance here. What we, one for one, we do for all. That's how we treated, that's how we treated Jeff.
The other part of this is it has, this is the first year that this is, this would be a change since Jeff's come here. So.
To, it's always gone through since.
It's always gone through since, so in twenty twenty-one, Jeff got twelve hundred dollars. Because the state. Law, when the legislature said, so that all employees that make less than eighty thousand get twelve hundred, everyone. There was no discussion about that. Your employees got one point six that year. It was about two point one. In twenty twenty-two, Jeff got one point six percent. The state guideline was two. I gave him less. Usually when people are at performance, we always give less than the state guideline because we want to give the high performers more. The county raise was two point eight. Twenty twenty-three was six percent from the state. We gave them five point five. Employees here got four point four. For twenty twenty-four, it was four percent at the state. I have in Jeff's budget, four point five starting July first. The county employees got four percent. On January first of this year. Because we're always trailing behind you guys.
Oh, how are we gonna deal with the? If we give him a raise, how are we gonna deal with the counties? How are we gonna deal with the rest of the employees?
Exactly.
Okay. This, this is wasting too much of our time. Um, move on to a vote. All in favor of giving Jeff the raise that was put forward by NDSU. Uh, we'll go on to a voice vote here. Avril?
I will guess.
Tranby?
Yes.
So horn?
No.
Edlin?
Yes.
Ready to vote no. Motion passed. Okay, we move on to the budget.
Did we also have the? We also wanted to visit about his secretary getting extra hours. Right now he has what, fifteen, fifteen hours? You were looking for, was it?
I'm gonna go, I'm willing to go down to county two and a half so you don't have benefits. And that'll save you sixty-four hundred dollars from what I presented in the budget. Uh, and that doesn't include the health because that wasn't in the budget line initially.
And then also.
This office needs torn, needs more than that. I, I have the least hours of everybody in Leslie's district. I need more hours to be more efficient and effective for the citizens of this county.
What is the price difference between current and with the twenty-two hours?
What's the?
What, how much more is it?
How much more?
The, it, the, what I, but it's twenty-two thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars savings. We go from twenty-five that I requested to the twenty-two and a half that I'm willing to accept. So that you don't have benefits. That's a, a non-benefited employee. So I'm asking for seven and a half hours more per week for my office. That is essential. For the citizens of this county.
Okay, let's, I'll make a motion to bring the secretary seven and a half more hours into the budget to be twenty-two.
We don't make motions on individual things in the budget. We make motions on the overall budget.
Well, this way we can find out where everybody feels if, if we should put that in there or not, or give that to them or not. That's where that is.
All right.
And if everybody is.
We're going back to the start of this thing so we can start where we're at.
There, there's a motion made.
At the, no, there's.
John, I made a motion on this.
At the start of this. We're two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars over budget. And you are skipping all that and going, uh, to add more things to the budget. We will get to that. This has to be taken in its totality. There was a process that we started out on. It was to decrease, increase the budget from last year by three point two percent. We are now at twenty-six percent and gaining as we go forward here.
I do recall there was a motion on the floor that I made.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Second. So we don't even know what dollar figure it is. We're making a motion just to grant him. His wish of more money without a dollar figure or anything attached to it. Is this ridiculous or what is going on here? You just made, you just made a motion to grant him money without knowing how much money it was.
John?
Not, no, not John.
You can be nice and not speak to me disrespectfully.
This is disrespectful to the citizens.
Now we are in discussion.
What did you make the motion, what did you make the motion for?
We're going to accept the hours. Now, John. Are we not in the discussion phase?
We're not going to discuss it unless it's put out in a formal motion with a dollar figure so that it can be put into the budget. You can't put hours into the budget.
Figure the dollar then, shall we?
Well, shall we? You just made the motion.
What was your idea with?
Okay. You know, obviously we are, got a budget issue. And like I said. This is my motion. This is a suggestion. Whether you guys want to go with it or not, it's up to you. But what if we took the tax director, made him back full, part-time to get him more help? And then, in the future, when we get one, if we get one. We can look at to raise it back to full-time again. But this way we can get him more hours. Uh, for his help. And then we can cut the budget of tax director and we would probably save more money doing that.
Josh, we're two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars over budget.
How much is it?
Seven thousand one hundred.
Two hundred and seventy-four thousand.
I understand, but I, but what I'm saying is, is we could cut one down to give to another one. And we'd probably save more money if we made the tax director part-time.
You guys are looking at nineteen point oh seven per hour.
I mean, does that?
Nineteen oh seven?
You get what I'm saying?
We're two hundred and seventy-four thousand.
I understand, we're two hundred and seventy-four. You're not a broken record, John. I get the number.
You want to vote on that? If, if that's the baseline, then that's where we're at. Two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars over. If there's a cut to the.
Is that what he's asking?
To anything, it should go against that dollar va, va, value. We gotta get. You, you were the one that put forward the three point two. That only, we're so far off from that now.
Actually, actually Rod was, I agreed with it.
Okay, so. We're semantics here. We're, we're not even close to the three point two. We're at twenty-six percent. So what was the purpose? The purpose of, of this exercise at the start of the budget was to arrive at a dollar figure we wanted to be at.
Okay.
You, you and Rod and, and I agreed to it. We did that. We haven't followed through with that.
No.
So then what do you want to do moving forward then?
Well, we have to decide. What we're here for is to decide how much money we're going to take from the citizens.
Okay, yeah, I understand that.
Okay, so you, you and Rod and myself. Decided that three point two percent increase overall was what we wanted to shoot at.
Okay.
We haven't even come close. We, we've, now with this increase that we just voted on. We're higher than we were at that point. We were at two hundred and eighty-four thousand. Now we're above that. So this whole exercise, this whole time, what we've been striving for, we've added to the budget, not decreased the budget.
But I'm also talking about cutting another department to make up for it.
I don't feel we should cut a department that we, that we need in the century code to have. That doesn't help us fill a position that we already can't fill.
So, so, so that's why I wanted to start at, at the, where we were starting at the start of this thing. Here's where we were when we came into the budget. If you turn to, if you turn to page four. If you don't have a perspective on what we're trying to do here. This adding, adding, adding is just going to make this worse. So if you look over in the left-hand column on page four at the bottom. The one six, two eight, nine, seven, ninety. That was what was levied last year. Okay? Now, if you look to the next column, right now we're at one million nine hundred eight thousand four fifty-two thirty. But we've just added to that already by today's vote. So that leaves us two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-one cents, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty cents over what we were last year. What you proposed, or what Rod proposed. And you agreed too, and I agreed too. Was a thirty percent increase, which would take us, we should be at one six, eight, one, ninety-seven.
Which we've already discovered that you're not going to get that dollar amount because of the raises put in the departments such as the road department and everybody else. We already exceeded that dollar amount. Due to their reasons.
There's, there's only one thing in this budget that is mandatory that be paid, and that is the payment on this courthouse. Everything else is subject to discussion.
Bringing it back around to how much it would be to bring a twenty-two-hour person a week for the extension office, it's a dollar thirty-two. Is how much that would be to give him. Per one hundred thousand dollar household.
Now, what dollar figure does it add to the budget?
Seven thousand four hundred and thirty-seven.
There we go.
Mm-hmm, which is a dollar thirty-two in the. And this is figured on mills that are current mills. We have no idea what our next mill that is going to be, what the mill value is going to be. Now, if our mill value went up, it would be less. But if our mill value stays the same, it would be a dollar twenty, dollar thirty-two.
It's still seven thousand dollars. It does, it does, the value of a mill does not change the dollar amount spent. It just distributes, distributes its over the, the people that pay it. If the mill goes, what are you smug about? If the mill goes up, it's still seven thousand dollars. If it goes down, it's still seven thousand dollars. It doesn't change anything. The check written is still seven thousand dollars.
But the dollar per tax coming into us, since we're worried about taxes.
The same amount of tax comes in.
A dollar thirty-two increase on their taxes.
No, the same amount of dollars comes in. The mill just distributes the tax dollars amongst the, amongst the properties. That's all it does.
Yep, and that's what we're about, people's property payments, their tax payments.
Boy, you're completely out in left field. The seven thousand dollar increase in wages to him increases the burden to the taxpayer, of taxpayer of seven thousand dollars.
Yep, by, which is a dollar thirty-two when you spread it out to the taxpayers on a hundred thousand dollar home.
Well, it doesn't matter. It's still seven thousand dollars. It doesn't matter if you spread it out at fifty thousand or forty thousand.
That you want to look at, John. The one you're looking at is that. This is just another perspective I'm showing that everybody to see how much it would be.
And dear commission, I want you to understand that my department can make this county money and make it more efficient. And make better citizens of this county. There is no other department that can do that. Just because of my newsletter last week, farm, one farmer saved hundreds of dollars because he did not apply glyphosate as a pre-harvest aid application, which could have lost you. That's an increase in money for that particular farmer, which is an increase in money to tax dollars for you. I can make money and improve this county's citizens by the work that I do in this county.
Jeff, we don't tax, we don't tax profits. An increase, an increase to the farmer is not an increase in tax dollars to us. This is not a, this is a property tax. It's, it's not a tax on profits. The increased profit to the farmer does not bring any more tax dollars into this, into the community. Property tax. Do you understand the difference? Evidently not. So. Well, I mean, we, we have to have things, we have to have things in perspective. He can't say that because he saved the farmer money, that's going to bring us more tax dollars. It doesn't. The only thing that brings more tax dollars is increase in value. Increase in value.
The full and true value of, wow, look at that.
Increase in value.
Full and true values. Why we should have a tax director and do our assessments and make our full and true values, they, they be where they should be. Thank you, John. You just clarified that.
This, this is insane. What are we talking about? We're talking about forcibly taking money away from our citizens. And then we're. It's as if the money grows on trees? Where does this come from? This comes out of, this comes out of the little lady's pocket that can't afford right now to keep her house cool. Or can't afford to keep it warm in the wintertime and can't afford her medicines. Every time we raise taxes, we, we punish people.
And if we had a tax director, that person could have helped these people apply for the homestead credit where the state helps these individuals who are on their fixed budget. To, to, that's what the state is there for. Again, I'm just throwing that out there, John, when you have your rebuttal, so it's like, this is. This, this is where those little ladies on their fixed income is homestead credit.
That will give them a lot of money, yes, it will. And we try to sign them up.
Yes.
So, again, if you want to spend the tax dollars, then spend the tax dollars. I'm not going to be part of it. I'm going to stick up for the citizens. That don't want to pay those tax dollars. They think that all these things are nice, but they're not, they're not the core of what makes their life. And yes, we can say the county agent does a very good job. He does. But that doesn't mean that everybody in the county benefits from that. There's core, there's core functions in the county. It's. Law enforcement, it's infrastructure, and it's taking care of the people that can't take care of themselves. Everything else is incidental. And everything else should be put in that perspective. How do we raise taxes on people? We're talking about twenty-six percent here at this budget going up, when most of the people haven't got a, a raise in their income at all. They're, they're still, they got a small raise of two, three percent in their social security. And we're going to raise their taxes by twenty-six percent. How long does that?
It's more like seventeen percent.
Yeah, how long does that stay?
Excuse me? What's the newest budget, budget number? We can keep talking.
Seventeen, what, or two?
I haven't made any changes that you guys have made right now. Did you want me to start doing that?
Whatever you raised it here, it's, it's two seven nine.
It's one oh nine. Well, we had to adjust it to, for the extension office.
That's what I mean. Whatever, it raises us two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, whatever that raised it. That's what we're going to buy here. So back to the point, are, are we abandoning, are we abandoning the goal of trying to keep this?
It was just extension.
Some kind of reasonable increase or not? Because if we're abandoning that goal, then we may as well just vote and just speed on with it.
Two eighty, two hundred and eighty thousand zero six, seven point one nine.
The one thing, the one thing I want to add to this is that. I've gotten calls too on, from, from farmers that want to see Jeff get a raise and that he does good work. And I don't doubt for a second that Jeff does. I, I'm not doubting what he says is true about his newsletters. And the people that are calling and wanting us for Jeff can afford it. They, they, they see, they want it. But I also agree with John that there is people in town that don't get any benefit from Jeff. That, you know, they're paying taxes and they can't afford, you know, we, we got the sick, the elderly, the old, the widows. That, you know, and we are taxing them to help. Pay for something that the people that benefit can afford it, but they can't. Um, you know, I think there's got to be some consideration here. Who's benefiting for it and who's having to pay for it?
And I've helped senior citizens with vegetable and, uh, landscaping questions, Rod. So I'm still benefiting them. Am I benefiting every citizen? No. But I'm benefiting many citizens that are still not, uh, that are in financial situations.
You know, and, and maybe you are, but, you know, I mean, if I want to be honest, I would, you know, I haven't had anybody from the garden club call me and ask, you know, you know, or anything like that. I mean, it's, you know, you, you, and, and I'm not knocking you, Jeff. I've had good report, I mean, really some big farmers called me and said, you know, you do an awesome job. And I know you do. But again, the people with flower gardens and gardens in town and, you know. Think, you know, they, they, you're there, so they use you, but I, do they want their taxes raised for those questions? I doubt it.
Well, so, so I didn't help Sarah then, and it's irrelevant that I helped her.
That's personal.
That's not so there. Okay, so in figuring this out, if we walked away from this budget today as it stands, the one point nine oh nine, with the current meal value of point five thousand two oh four, on a hundred thousand dollar home, their tax would go up fifty dollars. From two ninety-eighty-four last year to three forty-eighty-five, so it's fifty buck difference. And if you increased Jeff's department and allowed twenty-two hours.
Twenty-two and a half.
Let's go with twenty-two, 'cause that's what I figured. It'd be fifty-one thirty-three increase total for a hundred thousand dollar home.
If you want something in perspective, so that we can, the two hundred eighty thousand dollar increase divided by the total taxpayers, not the total amount of property, total taxpayers, what, seven hundred taxpayers in the county is four hundred dollars per taxpayer.
She probably figured by their full and true value.
No, if you're raising, if you're raising the two hundred eighty thousand dollars, you divide it by the total amount of taxpayers, it's four hundred dollars per taxpayer. Now, no doubt, some of them are up here at twenty-eight hundred, some of them are down here at two dollars, but the overall average is four hundred dollars per taxpayer.
There is still that motion on the floor, more discussion. We've been kinda sitting in dead silence right now.
Because we can't make a motion on individual parts of the budget.
We sure can. We can see in agreement.
No, we cannot. We make a motion on overall budget, which we're, which we're trying to discuss right now. The overall budget we take into consideration, we haven't approved one dime in this budget yet.
Who gets to decide whether or not Jeff gets twenty-two hours or not? Don't we all get to decide that or not?
The process is this. We decide how much money we're gonna spend, then we decide how we're gonna spend it, and then we vote on the overall budget. That's the way it's done. There's gives, that's, that way, there is a give and take. So, does Jeff's request take precedence over another request? Does Jeff's request take precedence over all, the overall dollar amount? Does Jeff's request take precedence over a increase in the budget or a decrease in the budget? That's how the budget works. That's how it's always been done. That's how it's supposed to be done.
I don't think we can, we don't, there's
How it has to be done.
There doesn't need to, we don't need to decrease the budget, and I feel solid the way the budget is right now. I am comfortable with it is. I would even be comfortable to add the extra for Jeff to have more hours.
Yeah, and, and it will be, and, and when, when this is approved, and, and then the voters will get to decide if that was appropriate. That's how this works. We're supposed to represent the people that we're in charge of, and we're supposed to, this is all supposed to be out in a public forum, so that the people that you represent, that I represent, that everybody represents can say, yes, that was, that was illogical, that's how I want my money spent, or no, that isn't how I might want my money spent, or why are they spending my money? Why am I subject to this when it, when it is not spread across everybody? And that's how this works.
But you are telling everybody that we need to cut the budget and find a number, because we started out with this three point two percent, which is not going to make it. We already went above that three point two percent when we did the increases in salary. That's all, we're, we're not gonna cut enough to get back down to three point two percent.
I could do it within, I could do it within five minutes. So, that, your argument is we can't, my argument is that we can't.
Then show us where you can. Show us where you can, John. Where are you?
I wanna cut every, I wanna cut every department by fifteen percent.
Where and how?
Fifteen percent. Exactly what I said. Cut every budget by fifteen percent. Every line item, everything by fifteen percent. There's other ways to do it. Let, let's take some things out of the budget. Let's decide, prioritize. Maybe some of these, maybe some of these budgets aren't a priority. This, this whole process is just that.
We already reviewed the budgets with the departments, and a lot of the departments didn't increase their expenses in the departments. The only thing they increased in the department was the salary. Please don't interrupt me when I'm talking, John.
You just asked me how I should do it. You interrupted me. You asked me how we should do it. I just told you. You have, you think we should have it where it's at. I said there's ways to do it to make this, it's like a business. If you don't have the money to spend, you don't spend the money. That's the way it is. There's nothing in this budget, other than the payment on this courthouse, that is mandatory.
And that's that extra forty-three thousand that's added on there?
No, that's, that's
Or that's just the taxes along from the courthouse.
No, that's, no, I mean, the overall payment. We owe money. The only money that is owed to an outside entity in the county is for this courthouse. So, that, that is a mandatory.
I thought you were also saying this new courthouse tax increase deal too. I thought that was part of it.
That's, that's a bookkeeping problem. I don't think that forty thousand is, is, is supposed to be there. But that's irrelevant. So, I mean, I think that can be decreased by twenty-five thousand dollars, which would take it down to two seventy-five. If, if, if you, if you guys wanna vote on the two seventy-five, and you think that is, you think that's where you wanna be, that's how this thing works. But you, but rest assured that it won't, it won't end in this building. That, that, that will, that will go out to all the voters. Everybody will get, receive a explanation, or will want an explanation of why that happened. That's what we're here for, is to determine what's best for the people we represent. I, I'm quite confident the people I represent do not want their taxes raised by what we're raising them here. Each one of you will have to make the determination what the people you represent want.
Which is fifty bucks a month, or fifty bucks per one hundred thousand dollar value. On the commercial and egg, it's fifty-five, fifty-six per one hundred thousand. Isn't this year we have that primary residence credit of five hundred?
Next year that goes on you.
Next year? Does that be on this year's? That will be on this year's taxes, it'll be on next year's taxes.
That's for twenty twenty-four.
Isn't that five hundred? Yeah, that goes on this year.
Yeah, it'll be this, it'll be this year's tax, I believe, right?
Right, for next year's.
Yeah, okay. I mean, so that makes a huge difference.
So, what does that do?
Uh, so people got to go online and apply for an up to five hundred dollar credit, so as long as their consolidated tax doesn't exceed the five hundred dollars, they'll get up to five hundred. So, if their consolidated was like three hundred and fifty dollars, they'd get three hundred and fifty, so our consolidated taxes would be paid for. But I think there was like four hundred something citizens that applied.
So, four hundred of the citizens this year are gonna get that tax credit. And of a hundred thousand dollar home, on a hundred thousand dollar home, their tax would be three forty-eighty-five. If the meal levy is still the same at twenty-five point two oh four, which it probably shouldn't be, but and even if somebody has a two hundred thousand dollar home, at the current budget where it sits right now, it'd be two eighty-one sixty-nine. And with that five hundred dollars, it'd be a hundred and eighty-one bucks.
So, we should take their part of their five hundred dollars away from them and give it to somebody else. That makes sense.
They would pay the taxes anyways.
It's supposed to be to benefit that person.
It does, 'cause it pays up to that tax. They don't get cash in the pocket.
And we say, well, you got five hundred dollars, give us part of it. How, how does that pay the babysitter? How does that pay the heat?
The five hundred dollars doesn't go to them. The five hundred dollars comes to, they'll get paid whatever the tax dollar amount is, correct?
Yeah, so it goes on their taxes, so.
It goes against our taxes. So, it goes to them. Maybe they don't, it doesn't matter if they hand them a five hundred dollar bill, or they say you don't have to pay five hundred dollars, it still goes to them in their pocket. That's the purpose of it. So, and, but I guess we, we feel we should be able to take their, part of their five hundred dollars and away from them. That makes sense to me.
They wouldn't get it otherwise.
That makes sense to me.
It's, it's hard to know what, how to vote on, you know, on, on the fifty dollars per hundred thousand, when we don't know the rest of the budget, how many, you know, how many more of these are gonna come along during the rest of this budget? You know, 'cause there's gonna be some hard cuts that have to be made somewhere.
The fifty dollars, Rod, is if we have in the budget right where it is right now.
Right, exactly. But I mean, we, yeah, but we're not done. You know, it's hard right now to make a, a, a firm yes on this without knowing the rest of the budget. I think that we need to go through the budget and then see where we're at, or what our final number is.
Have we missed somebody's department? Have we reviewed every department with them?
I'm gonna believe I was saying, uh, maybe I'm wrong, but I think we should cut the tax rate, because we don't have anyone in there. We can't get anyone in there full-time or part-time. And if we can get somebody in there part-time and get, get him a full-time, that's, that's my opinion. I mean, I know people don't agree with that, but that would definitely save money there.
I'm just afraid with that, Josh, and I, I agree with what you're saying, but the, the problem of it is, is that we're just causing another hurdle in, in a year. If we get, if we get somebody that will take the position, then now we're trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for them.
I get, I get what you're saying. I do.
You know, I, it, it's, it's like the city, you know, they've had budgets where they've made tree budgets and street budgets, and then they use the money, and then when it comes time for the streets and to get them done, then they end up, you know, putting these specials and stuff on because they don't have the money. I, I think we're just, we're just, uh, opening up another can of worms there.
So, is there any where you'd like to see a cut or change, Rod?
I, you know, I don't know. I mean, like I said, you know, we all know that these are tough, these are tough, uh, decisions, you know? I mean, the emotional side of a person wants to help everybody, but the business side of it is that we have to keep things affordable for the people that are living on a fixed income. And, you know, and that's, that's, that's the hard part, you know, when, when there's a want list and a need list, it's two different things.
Madison, what, or Sam, I mean, sorry, what was the dollar amount increase of insurance and salaries of this two hundred and some thousand? Was it of the two hundred and eighty-some thousand, whatever it is, how much of that increase was salary increase and insurance?
I didn't figure that out.
Pretty easy to figure. The, the general fund went up, went up two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, which almost all of it was salaries and benefits, so in rough figures, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's on page four, there's a top. This is reflective here.
Okay, I see.
And, and that, that in the general fund is almost all salary benefits. It wasn't, as you stated, there wasn't much to cut. That was almost all, all salary benefits.
So, most of the increases from that, most of the, the tax increases from the wages and everything else? Besides a few other things, but like you said, someone's a little misprinted too, like you said, the tax deal and everything else.
So, let's talk about that. New courthouse, that forty thousand dollars. See Tim. See. See. So, if you look down at page forty-two, we're carrying, go down to January balance. Balance January first, and then read across there. So, in two thousand twenty-three, we had a positive balance of thirty-two oh seven thirteen. That was due to the fact that we underestimated the value of a meal. Two thousand twenty-four, now we have, we're carrying a negative balance, and I, I, that's not possible other than a bookkeeping error. Somewhat, we entered something wrong somewhere. Because, think of it, think of the, this is just, this is an in and out account, basically. Here's the payment plus the fee to Bank of North Dakota, which is about ten dollars, eleven thousand dollars. And then we levy for it, and the statute says we can levy up to ten meals, but, up to ten meals, but only in a, in a dollar amount that is needed to make the payment. So, that forty-four thousand dollars in of increase is reflective of that twenty-five thousand dollars. I just don't know where it came from.
So with this one, I always use, I always go to the, uh, payment schedule that we have for the bond pay, or for the, it's not a bond payment anymore, it's just a, uh, lease revenue.
So we, we had, we had a bond originally for this, and then with the bond, there's also, the interest payments were made separately to the Bank of North Dakota, and the Bank of North Dakota is a trustee, so they have fees and that. So there was two different payments made, the principal on the, on the bond payment, and then the fees and the interest of the Bank of North Dakota.
Correct, and so then now they, um, put that together now, and, um, so when I was putting it in, I, you know, estimated that, that we would do the one hundred and nineteen thousand. Well, then, it was the hundred and nineteen thousand plus the interest, plus fees, and then we need to, um, budget also a little bit extra for, um, the, the, uh, homestead credit and any abatements that we do. So with all of that, we underbudgeted for that one, so we need to put in a little bit extra for
To make up for it.
For those, yeah.
But that still doesn't, so if, look at the balance of January first, look at that line, so the thirty-two hundred dollars and seven cents showing up in the twenty-three budget was actually, the balance came from the twenty-one budget. Because of the, the prior budget, you don't, it isn't closed out when we're doing this, so the prior budget, that didn't come from the prior budget. So then the two thousand twenty-four deficit of twenty-five thousand dollars actually came from the two thousand twenty-two budget. That was a balance brought, the balance brought forward into these things come from, not the prior year, just as, just as, uh, we don't use any money brought forward in two thousand twenty-four and the twenty-five, that, that, it just carried forward because of the increase in revenue. So I, I don't know how we got a negative balance in there. To put it, to put it another way, we're bed, we're levying money to pay something that's already been paid.
So we're basically overestimating of what?
No, we're levering, levying money to pay something that's already been paid. We're, we're showing that we owe twenty-five thousand, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and nineteen seventeen dollars previously.
Well, we've already made that.
But the payments have been made, so where, how, where did that previous balance come from?
Well, the budget was for the one nineteen, I didn't put into the account, we didn't put into the budget for the, um, interest that year.
For twenty-two.
For twenty-three. Twenty-two, you ended the year, you ended twenty-twenty-two with three thousand, yeah.
Thirty-two oh seven.
Yep, and you began that year with four thousand six hundred and eighty-nine, so this negative balance just came from the twenty-twenty-three year where the interest wasn't put in. It was just that, it was just on the payment schedule.
That's ten thousand dollars in interest, we're, we're, it's twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand dollars in deficit.
Because of that other...
I believe so.
And then that...
See, see, what I think happened is if you look at the Bank of North Dakota principal in twenty-twenty-three, we weren't paying it to the Bank of North Dakota anymore then, were we? We'd already switched over.
In twenty-twenty-three?
Right.
Yes, we had switched over.
Okay, so I think that hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars was a figure that when we were paying to the Bank of North Dakota, was the hundred and nineteen plus the fees. That's right. So it was plus the fees, so that got used, that hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar number got used, plus the ten thousand added on to it,
Right.
which created a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar, which it actually wasn't. It's less the ten thousand, but that had to have been amplified over and over again going back.
Well, this one, that, so we paid this one, which was the, the one nineteen, and then the interest of eleven thousand, then the fees of one thou, you know, just under two thousand, so then that got you to the one thirty-two, so then that's reflective in your budget, and then we also have a Bank of North Dakota,
That got doubled up.
Payment, so I would have to go and grab that voucher and see what that one...
See, I, I think the reason we have that twenty-eight thousand dollar deficit, I think we were adding the one thirty-two, which was already the total of the principal plus the fees, plus we're adding the fees, the interest into it of ten thousand. And I think we did that in prior years too, and I think that's what happened here. That we were, we were putting down a, we were putting down a, an expense twice. It was included in the one thirty-two as it is today, and then we were adding it on as interest to the bank, in the Bank of North Dakota, and the Bank of North Dakota wasn't even involved in twenty-three.
Yeah, I have to go and find that voucher to see, because, but we did pay the, it to the Bank of North Dakota in twenty-twenty-three. That same, that, this same... So this is that payment schedule, yep, you can take that. That's that payment schedule, the, the new one, and so then we were paying that, and then that's what this is. So we do still pay it to the Bank of North Dakota.
Not interest, we, we pay, we pay them a, we pay them a fee. We shouldn't be paying this.
Well, that's this.
No, this, this...
This interest?
Right. We should be paying this, but not this, because we no longer have any, we no longer have a loan with the Bank of North Dakota. This is the totality of the loan.
Right. So that's why I use the one nineteen.
Right, but if this is being paid, that should not be paid anywhere. The eleven thousand seventeen, that was being paid to the Bank of North Dakota when this was a bond.
Now we don't have that bond anymore?
No, it was replaced with this note, this private note, which includes interest and pay, this includes interest.
So includes everything all in one instead of separately?
I believe so.
So it throws up, so she don't need to add that interest payment on there, which throws it off?
You have eleven thousand?
I'm assuming, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Security.
Do you wanna look at that?
Well, we, we need to find out, we need, need to find out if this is principal and interest, or just principal.
Okay.
When did we change the, uh...
Twenty, in twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Oh, that's funny.
So that's the schedule that was going by?
This is after it was refinanced.
That's the principal. Interest rate is, is one point six five. But it's not giving me interest rate, it's, it's telling me, it's got the principal broke down per year, but it's not doing the, the principal rate is just rate held at closing date at one point six five. So is that, that eleven thousand seven nineteen's at the one point six five?
That's what we don't know.
Because there is gonna be an interest rate of some sort, one point six five, of the next twenty twenty-five payment, right?
Well, is, is this payment just principal, or is there principal and interest?
It looks like, it says principal. It says annual principal sinking fund schedules, this is just the principal one. And then this down here says the interest rate's one point six five.
On the, on the total value.
Rate held on it, so you, you're gonna have to ask them maybe the interest rate.
The Bank of North Dakota hold, yeah, see, if that's the case, then the Bank of North Dakota, then that's this payment. But it doesn't give me an overall, normally when it's, when it's a principal payment, you see, they have the balance here, and then it's a decreasing balance.
Mm-hmm.
Because you have a balance and interest on it separate.
Normally it decreases it, and there's a, there's an interest balance.
At least everyone I remember.
Yeah, mine break double too.
Because it tells you, you know, your balance for your interest and paid full term.
Well, I mean, you could do, so there, basically this is from one twenty, it's, it's one point three million, is what it is.
So in here, we should probably only put the one twenty-three and not put the interest in there, since it appears that the interest probably is being paid at the end.
No, this isn't the end, this is just twenty-eight.
Okay.
This, this is just, this is just the, this is a payment schedule for ten years.
Okay.
So if, if the payment schedule starts out at a hundred and twenty thousand and it goes to a hundred and forty, we conclude
That the interest is lower.
Then it's a hundred, right, that it's a hundred
Principles, yep.
Yeah, that, that the interest is being paid somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
And this is probably a principal payment, but you could also conclude that the value of this payments is one point, was one point three million dollars.
Yeah.
And then, so then now we can see
That's just giving you the detail of it, so this includes the principal and interest.
That's what I was thinking, that's what I was thinking, but it didn't look like that on that.
I don't know if that's the case, so one point three million dollars, what's the interest rate? Times point one six five? That doesn't come out right. We gotta find out.
Oh, where did that voucher go?
Oh, uh, can I get back to you? I didn't put it anywhere on my stuff.
It should be a Bank of North, it's right underneath the ears. There you go. So that's where it's the one nineteen, and that's what I budgeted for, and then it's got this one, and then we did another ten thousand six thirty-three. So I'd have to find that one to see what it, this thing looks like.
Yeah, you have to call.
We gotta call, call. This is the trust officer. This is, call Troy and ask him, he was involved in setting this up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
See if this is a principal and interest.
Okay.
He did, he did it, three years ago, we didn't, or two years ago, three?
Twenty-one was the last payment of the bond issue, and twenty-two was
Yeah, we did it.
Yeah.
That's right.
So then for twenty twenty-five, I'm doing the one twenty-three that it states on here, plus the eleven thousand for the interest.
But I mean, the, the problem still is, is that twenty-three thousand
Right.
nine seventeen fifty-one, that, it's still old. I think, I think for budgetary purposes, we should reduce that forty-four thousand by the twenty-three, and then we'll figure out what the, what the problem took place here. Does that make sense?
Say that again.
I think we should re, I think that twenty-three thousand nine seventeen fifty-one.
Twenty-three thousand...
On the balance January first.
Twenty-three thousand nine seventeen fifty-one, okay?
I think that should be zero.
Because we've already made those interest payments, is that what you're saying? Or it's...
There, there's, there's, if there's a problem, it, it shouldn't be reflective of this year's budget. We're budgeting more money than is actually owed.
Because we've already made the interest payment, and you're showing that, that we haven't made it, am I understanding that correct?
No, I, what I'm saying is, we don't know, we don't know why there's a balance brought forward, a negative balance brought forward. All we know is that there's a problem somewhere in the past, that problem somewhere in the past can't be reflective of a, of a levy in two thousand twenty-five.
Hmm.
We're only, by law, we're only allowed to levy the dollar value of the payment and the interest. And right now, we're levying the dollar value of the payment, the interest, and the twenty-three thousand dollar previous balance, negative balance. So we have to go back and figure out where that previous negative balance took place, and then correct it. But if, for budgetary purposes, we can correct it right now and then go back and find it.
Does that number come from you said?
And fix it.
Is that, is that a forward number from somewhere else?
Well, yeah, it would be that forward number from the beginning balance of twenty, or from December.
It happened in twenty, it happened coming out of twenty twenty-two, because I don't know why.
But we're not short on there though.
We're at, we're adding an additional twenty-three thousand, is what you're saying.
So, so what's it?
Can we say, can we say, because at this point...
That should be in here, because we don't
What this, what this says is the balance coming January first into the twenty-five budget, which came from twenty-three, because when twenty-four, we don't know what the ending balance is.
Yep.
Was twenty-three thousand dollars short.
Right.
And that might be, as far as the paperwork goes, but we know it can't, we know that we can't budget for ending above what this and this is by law.
Correct.
Okay, so we need to subtract this number, this twenty-three
Off that, what, forty-six?
Off that forty-three.
Okay.
For budgetary purposes, but we still, but then we still have to go back and figure, and fix this, where, where it's, where, where it came from.
So can I, would you be okay with leaving it the way that it is, so that I can then go back and grab that invoice, talk to Troy, get everything done? But we leave this budget the way that it is right now, because we can't increase, we can only decrease?
But do we?
So then after estimated tax statements go out, before this budget is approved, final, we could then have that number?
Well, no matter what, we have to make that, that twenty-three thousand nine seventeen zero. It can't be, it can't, it can be a positive number, but it, it can't be a negative number. Any, any given year, we can only, we can only budget, we can only levy, because this is, this is a, this is a levy on its own.
So, so you wanna transfer in?
You only wanna levy the amount that we actually only have to owe as a payment, not versus any negative reflects on it, correct?
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah. Because that's what throws it off, is it says we still owe negative twenty-three dollars.
And then, in the meantime, the power break, can she make a quick call and see?
Motion, to take a five-minute break, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by April. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abolled, same sign. Okay, we got that straightened out. That's, it's not going to make, the way it looks here, it's not gonna make any difference, because it was paid out of the general fund. So if we, if we pay back the general fund, it will just, if we take out the general fund and pay back this special account, it'll decrease the forward, the balance brought forward in the general fund, and decrease this, there'll be a wash. It'll, it'll just show, it'll show less revenue forward in the general fund, and not as, and more into this special fund, but it won't, it won't change anything. So leave it alone. And it'll probably get changed, it'll probably get changed overall at the end of this thing, just to make, but it's not gonna make, it's not gonna make a difference in the levy. The way it looks. So we can sit and stare at it till we
It has to be approved today.
Budget, but
The preliminary budget for estimated tax statements needs to be approved today. Please.
Can we send out estimated tax statements when we don't have our mill value? I know we sent them out last year, but
You have to.
But
You have to send them out with the information that you have right now.
Legally send them out without having the right?
Yes.
It's an estimated statement. But yeah, they have to go.
Well, because we, we don't budget in miles, we budget in dollars.
And so then these, then it's telling the taxpayers which budget hearings, these are your times, these are your places, this is, the increases, all the things.
Okay.
But it, it has, they have to go out with the information, the current, most current information that I have available. But it it has to. They have to go out with the information, the current most current information that I have available.
Jamie, you were very fine saying yes, they can send it without approved mill.
Yeah, I mean, it's an estimated statement.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to double check that.
That's why the state. That's why the state doesn't even calculate the value of a mill until after the budgets are all due because you're not supposed to. You're not supposed to budget in mills. You're supposed to budget in dollars. That's the whole purpose of it.
I want to have new adjustments or changes to the budget.
So the the change that I made was for Jeff's salary. That's been the only change that I have made. Uh, so you're at uh in overall increase two hundred and eighty thousand sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents.
So you haven't put any suggested additional hours for the six of them?
That is not reflective in that number.
So the total dollar amount is one million nine oh nine zero thirty-eight oh nine? Is that what I got?
One million nine oh nine zero three eight point oh nine.
Perfect. And on the taxes, fifty dollars more from last year on a hundred thousand dollar home.
But that's not including the addition?
Not including additional or no.
What do you have for the total value of the county?
The taxable value of the county I have at. Um, reflective in this budget, twenty-five thousand two oh four zero six five.
Cause that was from last year. Two hundred and fifty million.
Uh, twenty-five million two oh four zero six five.
No, but you have to add two zeros to it, right? The total value of the of the all the properties in Griggs County. That's all the that's all the.
Taxable value, yep, is twenty-five million, twenty-five million, two hundred and four thousand uh six five. And so then one mill would bring in twenty-five thousand two oh four point six five.
Let's see, they moved the decimal point two places to get the twenty-five million.
And then they're gonna. So other is the state just gonna go with our number or are they gonna come in and do their own assessment or is it gonna be a fight?
They'll tell me that I have to change it.
What was her mill last year? What was that?
That's what her mill was worth.
The state's not gonna do anything until we get the sales tax ratio done study. And they can't do it for us. Going to that meeting that we had. I don't know if you heard the meeting. If you didn't.
They will still do something, even if we don't do anything. The state will step in and tell me. It just will probably be.
Will they though?
They'll just base it on somebody else's.
Verify that with. Will you will you call?
I I'm saying they will do something.
They've done it in the past where they've raised it to.
Yeah.
Within tolerance.
With the sales ratio study?
Sure. They they.
We have never not done the sales ratio study. It's been completed every year, cause that's what they use to base on the full and true values of the county is off the sales ratio study.
But it's not. But see, the value of the colony isn't based on the value of Griggs County. It's based on them equalizing the values of all the colonies. So what they what they've done in the past, before I was a commissioner, it was six or seven years where there wasn't one turned in the same. But they'll just they'll just say the overall increase in values amongst the other colonies is X percentage and that's what they'll raise ours.
I'd feel comfortable if somebody would verify that with the state. Call them and say, if we're not gonna do it, what are you guys gonna do? What do we figure it on? If the sales ratio study isn't done.
The mill, the the value of a mill is inconsequential to the budget process. You just want the value of a mill up so that.
That's how we figure out how much a taxpayer pays is on the value of a mill.
No, you there's some there's entities. I know that. There's some entities in Griggs County that want a higher mill value so that they can run their budget up right up against the mill levy limits so that they get more taxable dollars. And that that's just that's just a statement of fact. And but for budgeting purposes, there's no need to know the value of a mill we budget in dollars. And the dollars, the mill all it does is convert the value of property to equally proportionate those dollars. That's all the mill does.
Right, that's you're correct on that, but I was you were talking about the sales tax ratio and the mill value and what will it be for twenty twenty-five? We have to have the sales tax ratio study completed in order to figure what the mill value is for the next year.
We we don't ever figure.
For the state to figure that.
Yeah, we never.
We need to complete the sales tax ratio study. And if you guys don't think we need to, would somebody please follow up with the state and get that verified with them that we do not need to complete the sales tax ratio study?
What I'm saying is is if if we're thinking that just because we don't have it done, that the state's not gonna do anything. They're gonna do something. Is what I'm saying.
Will you call and ask them what they're gonna do? So we can verify.
She said that. She said they're gonna, like he was saying, that it sounds like they're gonna just take everybody's value of all the counties and average it out and then that's what our taxable value is.
That's the that's the process they're going through is the process of equalization at the state level. So they're looking at everybody's. Nor I mean, when we went through the equalization process here, we looked at what the townships gave us for values, what the cities gave us for values. We didn't go in and say, well, it looks like Dover Township should be higher because the other townships are higher. We we just took them at their valuations and approved it. And that that's that's the basic process that the state does. Is they look at everybody's valuations, but they go the next step and they try to equalize them. Why should property in Steel County be on par with property in Griggs County or property in Nelson County or property in Ransom County? I never have figured that one out, other than the fact is it's always in the state's best interest to have higher valuations.
So then get more tax.
It isn't in value. It isn't. It isn't necessarily in Griggs County's best interest to have higher valuations. It isn't. It certainly isn't in the taxpayer's best interest to have higher valuations. If you bought a if you bought a home twenty years ago at forty thousand dollars and you don't plan on selling your home, why do you have to keep paying more tax and more tax and more tax on it? And when you do eventually sell it, they'll take half the tax in in income tax anyway, and you already bought the home with tax money, cause you couldn't write it off. It's 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 a it's a silly. It's a silly system that's taxing people without ever producing a profit. So i- if you owned your home outright and Tranby has a mortgage of a hundred thousand dollars on his home, you both pay and they're both they're both hundred thousand dollar homes. You both pay the same owner property tax. Whether and a farmer that has a four thousand dollars acre of land, if it goes up to five thousand dollars, he he pays more property tax. Did he get any more dollars into his pocket to pay that property tax? No. Nothing at all. In fact, just the opposite. As values go up, it costs more money to to business to do business, which decreases your profit.
Isn't that opposite of what you said in the meeting that you had with the state tax commissioners where you mentioned that when the full and true value of the county is up, that means the mill levy is up. Twenty-five thousand. So when people's values go up, the mill levy goes up, which means it takes less tax dollars to meet your budget.
No.
That is exactly what you said there in that meeting.
No, no.
So for example, for for example, the mill levy the two years ago was twenty-one thousand or was it twenty-three thousand?
Oh, what year?
Twenty twenty-three, but in twenty twenty-four, it jumped up to twenty-five thousand, which means it takes less mills to meet the budget, which. So let's say, well, I can give you an example. Let's say, for instance, let's say, for instance, the mill value of of this is, um, give me a second to figure out, to do a calculation. Uh, let's make our mill value higher. Times, let's say the mill value goes up to, whoops. Let's say the mill value even goes up to twenty twenty-six thousand, which isn't a whole lot more. It's twenty-five. It's eight hundred dollars more, okay? So remember, I said it was fifty dollars more difference with that. So if the mill value, full and true value goes up to two point six million, that means your mill value is twenty-six thousand, which it would take people's taxes for a hundred thousand dollar home would be thirty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. Because your the mill value is higher, cause everybody's full and true values of their of their places.
You're figuring it backwards.
I sure am not, John. This is the spreadsheet is telling me exactly what it is.
Okay, here, I'll put it in plain and simple English. I'll put it in plain and simple English for you.
Can I finish? I received the spreadsheet from 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 a gal from the association who built this for us to say, here, here's your comparison as to how much people's taxes would change with the full and true value changes or how much it would change if you increased your budget. Cause that's what the biggest question is. Wonder if you increase the budget two hundred thousand dollars. How much is it increase? How much is it gonna change for the taxpayers? So that's what this spreadsheet is.
Okay, we have a budget today of we have our budget today of let's just say it. Let's just say it's twenty thousand dollars. And the mill is worth and a mill is worth twenty-five hundred, whatever we want the mill worth at. If we raise the value of a mill, it doesn't decrease the dollar value the taxpayer has to pay. It does not decrease. If that's the case, let's raise the mill out right out the top of the of the spectrum and the taxpayers won't have to pay anything. All the mill does is divide those taxpayers dollars amongst the whole county. So raising a mill does not decrease the amount of money a taxpayer pays. If that's the case, we could we could we could balance our budget real easy by raising the mill and the and the budget would go down. That's not the way it works. You're you're working it backwards. We take the dollars that we are gonna levy and then the mill spreads them across the value of the property. Plain and simple. And so either you got to spread futures from somebody that doesn't know what they're doing or you're misinterpreting the spreadsheets. But our increase in the value of a mill always will increase the total value of Griggs County, which will allow for more taxes on each individual property. And if you don't believe that, go back and ten years and look at and look at your home and look what you paid on taxes on your home. Let's say you paid fifteen hundred dollars ten years ago and the mills were at.
I stand by my comments.
I know, but they're wrong.
And my explanation, it is not wrong.
Well, let me let me finish. What what was the mill levy ten years ago?
I don't know, John.
It was thirteen. What is it now?
Okay, so let's.
What what is it now? It's twenty-five. What's the taxes in your home now? Are they higher? Are they higher than ten years ago?
So let's.
Are they higher than ten years ago?
Let's.
Are they higher than ten years ago?
Yes, I'm sure it is, John.
So you're 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 paying more tax and the mill levy is higher. That just proves your point.
Just break that, John, that you've had the budget the same for the last ten years, but yet people's taxes went up?
What?
Didn't you break that you kept the budget the same for the last ten years?
We have.
Comment and you were and like people's so people's taxes wouldn't go up?
Go go look at the dollar value of the taxes for the last ten years. It stayed the same.
And so if everybody's if everybody's if the full and true value was at nineteen thousand, people's taxes would go up to a hundred and sixty-three thou- a hundred and sixty-three dollar difference. So the full and true value needs to be.
Played off against the amount that's needed to rate to levy.
This is I I'm just plugging it into my spreadsheet for exactly to the difference.
Okay, let's go on to something else here.
I am good with the budget where it sits. I don't feel the need to be any cuts anywhere.
How the question is, where should, what can we? Let's be blunt. What can we rob Peter, Paul?
Well, if if you remember when we started this, I said we have to set priorities. And so the the priorities are whatever your priorities are. Mine happened to be the infrastructure.
Correct, yeah.
Policing and and some kind some kind of social safety net for these senior citizens and and others that can't. And for everything else has a lower priority. And it all depends how you set those priorities. And 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 I can't tell you how to set them. I I know how I would do it if I wanted to bring this back into into line. And there's some things that are. Let's assume everything is essential to somebody.
It is.
Okay.
That's true.
Okay, so so then the priorities have to have to be how essential? How many people does that particular budget serve? So if that particular budget serves ten percent of the population and this budget over here serves thirty percent of the population, obviously, the budget that serves thirty percent of the population has a higher priority. That's that's how it's done. That's how it's done in in a whatever budget you're doing. Whether it be the budget for your household or the budget for your business, they're given priorities and the money is distributed accordingly. That that's just a process. If you don't wanna use that process, if if the process is, well, I think we should do this and this and this and this, then that's fine. Then vote for that, but be 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 able to, when questioned or when brought to the carpet on it, be able to defend your position. Because eventually, if we keep raising budgets by twenty percent and the people that are paying the dollars is only going up two or three percent, what happens? They got two percent increase in their income and we raise the the amount we want them to pay by twenty percent. It doesn't take a financial genius to figure out what happens there. And these small towns have seen the huge inflation in prices, but they haven't seen the huge inflation in wages. We're we're left out on that. So we it it's a it's a catch twenty-two. So the only thing to do is somehow, how do you keep more money in the taxpayer's pocket? Because that's what we're here for. We're here to represent the taxpayer. What does a taxpayer want? The taxpayer wants to be financially able to take care of themselves. And and the longer this goes on with us spending more money, then they're actually increasing their valuations, our personal valuations, the worse this gets. The only hope is that come November, the citizens say enough of this and do away with property tax. That doesn't help us with this budget, by the way. It's Stephanie's job to try and push her position. It's my job to try and push my position. It's your job to try and push your position. And at the end, it's all our job to agree on a majority on which way to go. That's the system it's under. There's no easy way to do this. No matter what happens, no matter what happens, there's gonna be people that ask you what in the hell you did that for. Wayne, I had one question on your budget. And I think I know what it is, but I don't I don't know. What, that C seven? There's a there's a line item in there for road and or bridge. What is that? It's like it's like a hundred and six thousand dollars. Is that a specific project or is that just a generalization?
I think that was the uh our share of the Chip Seal project.
Of the what?
Chip Seal project for Hanford.
The one that's coming up?
Airport Road. Can be shipped next year.
Okay, so doesn't that doesn't that come out of their other fund?
If it's paid for by.
Yeah, that should come out of the that should come out of the savings accounts.
Well, the C fund, it's called that.
Because that's got like three million in it.
That's right.
And it should come from that.
Other money set aside for stuff like that?
What fund is that? What's the number in that fund?
The other one.
It's called the road.
No, the road and bridge fund is the one. No, the road and bridge fund is the one.
What page is that on, John?
I'm looking here.
Well, it's the road special.
Road special fund, C eight.
It's got two point two.
But I wanted to clarify, is that, is that where, that one's got two point two million? So that, I wanted to make that clarification. So it's got two point two million, but the nine hundred thousand pending from the. Prairie Dog Fund that's coming in twenty-five, hasn't been added to this yet, because we can't add money that we don't have in our hand.
Correct.
Right, so that, in actuality, we can say that mon- that fund has over three million dollars in it. My question is, Wayne, do we pay for those seal funds usually out of this spe- this, this special fund, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, so, so then we're doubled up, basically, that, we're doubled up with that road and bridge for. Two hundred and three thousand dollars in the, we've got it in two budgets, basically.
I only have it in one. I, I only have it gotten the present budget, I guess.
No, what I'm saying is, we usually pay for that chip seal fund, what do we pay for that? What account?
That's special.
Well, there's, there's a, I think I have the accounts.
It is road special project, is that where the chip seal, okay, okay. So, but right now you have. Also, you have that special projects in the general road account, the road and bridge fund.
I don't have the expense on the road special projects, though.
Because that's an in and out account, we never have that.
Okay.
We can't, that's, that's a count, and that's an account that doesn't have to be paid back to the general fund, that's why we have it that way. So what I'm saying is, that's probably, that hundred and three thousand isn't gonna be paid out of the.
Of taxpayers.
Well.
Current budget funds.
It, it's added to the budget, and it shouldn't be added, is that what you're saying?
Unless you pull in the money from there to, unless you pull money from that C account. To, to wash it out, so that it's strong, but it's already paid. Does that make sense? Does that make sense on that?
Sure that we're gonna pay it, but we're gonna pay it on a different account, so it's not gonna reflect the tax.
Not the general fund, yes.
If the hundred and three, six thousand dollars was taken out of the county road and bridge fund. It would be paid out of, it's always paid out of the special fund, it would decrease the overall levy by a hundred and six thousand dollars.
We even have nine hundred and twenty-three thousand in prairie funds sitting there, correct?
No, that's in, that's in the special fund here.
Yeah.
I don't have that reflective right now.
Okay, so that's not even reflected in.
That's what he was saying, it's not reflective, so then that other.
Oh.
The new.
The new, no, but she's talking the old one, do we still have?
The old one's there, the old one's there.
Old one is there.
And we could take out of that, too, couldn't we?
No, no, not, no, no, no. The, the old fund is there, and that's reflective, that's reflective of the county road and bridge fund.
Oh, is it, okay.
The new money.
There's prairie dog funds that are in this budget, they are on.
I get what you're saying now. It's already included of that two point two, and we're still getting the other nine hundred and some thousand, that's gonna reflect it, okay.
That's correct. Right, Sam, or have I got that wrong?
Um, you also do have the prairie dog, the old prairie dog funds. Oh, no, no, I transferred those.
They transferred those.
Yep, I did.
And those went, those went to the county road and bridge fund.
Correct.
That's right.
No, the road special projects.
Where is that road special project?
C eight.
I do not see it.
It's C eight.
Except it's in reserve.
What? No, it's not a reserve, it's C eight. It, it's, it's, there's two million, it used to be, Wayne, it used to be the.
Two million, two point.
It used to be the one point three, and then we got that nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, so then I bumped it up to two point eight five.
So you get one point three six is what's currently in the special, road special funds.
They got one point six of the expenditures that will, that will decrease, decrease the levy by, by one point six.
And, and it's still paid for over here. So you got it, Wayne?
Yeah.
I got it now, yeah.
Okay, so come, as soon as we're awarded the prairie dog funds, that two point two million will increase by the value of the prairie dog funds. So there'll be, by the time this budget is enacted in place, sometime mid.
After the year.
Twenty-five, yeah, sometime mid-twenty-five, when they distribute the prairie dog funds, that will, the next time we look at this. If nothing's spent out of it, that budget number will be three point one million, or somewhere in there. And the special roads funds project is where we pay for the seal codes. This other road and county bridge fund budget is the operations. Of the, of the road department.
The, the deal and operations, yeah.
And it has, it also, besides that hundred and six, it also has a reserve in there of one million ninety-five thousand.
Don't we have like another, another ninety-six thousand in there, or something like that, that we got this year?
Oh, yes, you got those, you got that ninety-six thousand, he could use for anything.
That's all in here.
Yep, yeah.
You could even.
That's all in, that's, cuz you could use.
That for the chip seal, towards the chip seal.
The chip seals, the chip seals paid for, there's, there's money over there for that.
Eighty-twenty on those projects.
Two, two point two million.
No, I mean, but the, the, the split, the split's always eighty-twenty.
There's money, yeah, there's money, there's money in to pay for all the chip seals, that's all there. So if this money in the road and bridge fund is hundred and six was for the chip seal, it's a double expense, basically.
So it added a hundred and six thousand to the budget itself, then is that what you're saying?
Wouldn't you add it to the revenue side, Sam? Would you put in the money, transfer it from there, you know, saying it's here, but it's gonna be?
What are you talking about?
But it is.
Or the?
It is, but it's, see, it, it eventually ends up, it eventually ends up here. Because, because the revenue less expenses equal the levy.
Right.
It, so the, the revenue and expenses are just as they are on the spreadsheet, and then what you end up, that's why, see this here? Work, by, by this worksheet, we're trying to figure what this is, so this number becomes this number.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So if you decrease. This number, if you take this number away.
Yep. Yes.
Yep.
Would you, would you take that out, or would you?
Uh, which, which funds are you talking about? The legacy funds, or the, or the prairie dog funds?
No, the special. So prairie dog funds, you don't have anything, you, you, the legacy funds, you put the ninety-six thousand already in there.
Yes.
And the prairie dog funds are into there. The prairie dog funds are here, too.
Okay.
But I don't have the next tranche of the prairie dog funds that they predict will come next year, because we don't.
No, they're not.
Correct.
Yeah. But what he, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but aren't you saying that we already, we're adding the hundred and six to the budget already? Is that what you're saying, or am I?
Yeah, take that, take the hundred and six, she, you got a hundred and six thousand showing in the expenses, which. We, it's gonna be paid by not.
Cuz we already got the money in a different account.
Money in a different account.
So we don't need to add that to?
Correct.
Is, am I, uh, understand that correct? We don't need.
I don't know if you would take it off of there, or if you would put over here in the revenue side, that you're taking money from the special roads funds, do you see what I'm saying?
Or do you wanna add that into the reserve?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Cuz right now, I, you guys wanted to match the levy from last year.
Right.
Which was not, which was, came in under the thirty mils. So that's what I did to. So now the road, the road department is not increasing their levy, nor are they decreasing their levy from last year. So that, yeah, whatever you guys wanna do.
No, it's fine, cuz then we'll, I would take the hundred and six thousand out of there.
You wanna take it out?
Yes, because we have the money in the special roads funds to you to do it. Am I saying that wrong? Am I correct on that?
I mean, that's what, that's, yes. So if you took it out.
Yep.
And you left the reserve the same.
Yep.
And then you go to the overall levy, it will, it will be reflective in.
Yep, so then we are levying one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents more than last year.
Oh, what's the total, one point, what, one million, one point eight?
One seven, one million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, six ninety-two point two nine.
But see, that, that same, that process right there can be used in any budget. Decrease an expense, and you decrease levy, that very, very.
So that went from fifty dollars tax increase to thirty, thirty, on a hundred thousand dollar home. I apologize for not, I feel bad for not catching that, that he, that was being doubled. We already had the funds for it, and didn't need to ask for it again.
What was the, uh, the final number, one seven?
Are you wanting the levy, or are you wanting over and above?
Just the levy, what we, you have written down there.
Uh, so the levy is one million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, six ninety-two point two nine. Which is one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents over last year.
So.
We're at about one point. Ten point three, ten point four percent higher than last year. Instead of the seventeen percent, what we grabbed it for.
So here's, here's another, if we're not willing to cut the budget anywhere. The only other funds that are out there are those COVID funds. And the pretty express use of those COVID funds is to offset expenses incurred by the citizens. Due to COVID. So I think where that affected the budget is the overall, is it cost increases in health insurance, year after year?
Yeah.
And it could be argued, the cost increases in retirement, year after year. Because people, because of illness, or just sick of work, and because of COVID, retired, so that increased. The PERS payment. So if you, if you use the baseline of two thousand eighteen, before, the year before COVID. And then each year you subtracted the cost of the health insurance from two thousand eighteen. You would get an accumulative total going up, that I think could be transferred into the revenue side of the budget. To offset levy. Without using it to off, you can't use it to offset levy, you have to use it to offset expense. But the net result would be, it off, it would offset the levy. Like, you couldn't, you couldn't bring COVID dollars in to. Well, pick something, that, that, to buy a maintainer or two.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, but, but.
Any additional costs above the county is what you're saying, correct?
Yeah, so you could do it that way. So I don't know exactly what dollar figure that would be, for sure, we haven't. I had Sam look at the health insurance part of it. And I don't know what that came to, I didn't ever did that, that up, but we never did look at the, at the, we never did look at the, uh, retirement part of it, did we?
I didn't get those numbers, no.
Right.
But I thought, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, I thought we're keeping that for the Mills on Wheels program.
We are, um, there's.
Three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in there.
So basically, just use a little bit to offset it, is basically what you're saying?
I, I don't think, just offhand, I don't think this is gonna amount to more than maybe sixty or seventy thousand dollars.
When, uh, when does this need to be used by? Is it a use it or lose it thing? Is it used by twenty twenty-seven?
No, I don't, I don't see, I don't see a, a drop dead date for it yet.
I thought there was an end date to use.
But I mean, we can't, it's, it's such limited use that we can use it for, is a problem. So the senior citizens would work the. But I, I think, I think probably, what was the dollar value on the, hang on here, on the, uh. Health insurance, I don't think it was that much.
I thought it was huge, I thought it was like twenty-some percent to health insurance increase. No? Yeah?
Well, so you have to go each year, so, you know, if here's the baseline, two thousand eighteen, and you subtract it from nineteen, you subtract it from twenty, subtract it from twenty-one.
You go off of like a, what do you go off, like a five-year basis, is that what you're saying? How much has gone up over a five-year basis?
Well, no, no, each year.
No, but I mean, is that what you're saying? You just go off each year on a five-year basis, or do you go off each year, just, or do you just pick a number, and then go off of that?
No, we'd use, we'll use hard numbers.
Okay.
So into, uh, from July.
Send it to me. You probably did once.
I did, yep. Uh, so from July, uh, two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-one, it increased point. One four percent, and then from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, it increased fifteen percent.
No, but we just wanted to know, we needed to have hard numbers. I thought you did that.
What was the cost of, not the percentage, but the actual cost of increase?
That's what we're trying to figure here.
From twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three?
So two thousand eighteen, what was the premium? Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
How much per month?
Or the year, at the end of the year, how much we paid, the difference.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's.
And then, then each year you subtract it, not, you don't subtract eighteen from twenty-four, you subtract. You subtract eighteen from nineteen, eighteen from twenty, eighteen from twenty-one, from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then you get a total. And that's how much overage we spent. Because we pay it every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the only thing that, um, unless I'm not following correctly, the only thing is, is that. What we pay dollar figure.
Based on employees.
Is based on employees, and the employees that we had, and the, um. You know, if one month we didn't have an employee, you know, then that's reflective, so that, there is that, I did.
So I mean, we can, we can get a. We can get a.
Did I send you the health insurance or the retirement one, just now?
That's the health insurance. Did you hear that? So seventy-seven thousand four. Got a calculator or something? Okay, so seventy-seven thousand four seventy-two is the baseline in eighteen, right?
Okay, so you want me to take that up of what?
So then, so then, so then. This minus this, each, each year, we'll get the same increase.
Oh, you want me to subtract all of those?
Well, no, so, so, so here, there's ten thousand dollar increase there. There was a seven thousand, so now we're at seventeen. Now there's eleven thousand, so now we're at twenty-eight.
So the number of increase add them all up.
Now we're at, uh, twenty-eight, thirty-five, and now we're even, so it's thirty-five thousand dollars, basically. That make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So you might take thirty-five thousand on, under here?
That's what we would transfer into the general fund, for, into the account we paid that out of.
Okay.
Understand that, Sam?
Uh-huh.
To, just to offset the numbers and not make it look so bad, cuz it keeps going up and up, and the costs keep going up. So get some of that money back, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, so, so it could be argued that the health insurance costs went up because of COVID.
Or did you say thirty-nine? Did you say thirty-nine thousand?
I, I just do it in my head. I said thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand? I think we could just run, don't you think?
No, we better, if they call it, it's a better.
Okay, let me, let me take these numbers and do it.
Here, I'll just take a picture, but send it to me.
Send it to me. I might text something, you don't know. Text your friends.
We do the same thing on the PERS?
Oh, yeah, do, so.
So to finish it, so, so it could argue that, that those costs were incurred because of.
And that is, but that, that was just in the general fund, remember?
Right, I need, I know I need to have the road department, too, the health insurance and road department.
So you're, basically, so you're, you wanna, to offset the cost of insurance this year. To offset the cost of insurance this year, you wanna take out of the COVIDs?
And be reimbursed for the past years also.
Okay.
Because we've, we've paid. The, the county, the taxpayers have paid these.
Continuing costs, yeah.
The COVID dollars were meant to benefit the taxpayers because of the incos, these costs of COVID. So, we will benefit the taxpayers by offsetting their tax dollars now. So they will pay less because of these COVID dollars. That are really brought in. So the, the, the benefit will go directly to the taxpayer. For their cost.
And if they argue about, you can make an argument, costs is the reason why, one of these reasons why these costs have gone up is because of COVID related and what is.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any, I don't think there's much argument over that.
No, but I mean, if it gets questioned is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, any question to it, and I, and I think the same holds true with the.
Uh, I, I was just, I just made notes to do the retirement because I would need, I only had the general fund one, so then I would need the.
How about the, the, the road for the health?
Yeah, I'll have to go back on all of those and, and grab all of them, so then I would have that. Combined, right now I only did just the general fund.
Okay.
But.
But you're talking about a total average about, total cost about seventy thousand, that's what you were thinking?
I just, I'm just guessing, I think, I think it's more than that now, because the, so what's the overall?
Am I subtracting, I'm subtracting this year to this year, this year to this year, this year to this year, this year to this year?
No, no, so this, we're assuming this was the base cost.
Okay, so then subtract all of these from the main.
From the base, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So you'll get a, just the opposite, you'll, you'll just get a, a balance.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
You need that now, right now?
Yeah, so the total dollar value for.
Well, you're just doing general fund numbers.
Right.
Okay.
You're not doing the road department, so then I would have to go back and do all those road department funds.
But what I'm saying is, the, the, the. Payroll for the road department compared to the payroll, overall payroll for the general fund, are they both equal, or is the road department higher? Just to give a, just to give a, a generalization of how much, what dollars this is gonna encompass.
Payroll from the general fund to the road department, I don't know that because general fund is broken out. Between departments.
But it gets paid out of one, it gets paid out of one account.
No, general fund, because I would have mine, Maddie would have hers, Kelly would have hers, Jamie would have his, like, it's all broken out. Within the general fund, I would assume it would be the same because it's. Three, four, five, six.
Comes out of the same purse, but it's all different accounts that it comes out of, correct?
So it's all your B funds, so, but it, it's about.
How mu- how much do we have in the COVID funds, Sam?
COVID funds?
What'd he say, three hundred?
Um, that is reflective on page C thirty-three. And you have.
Oh, I said three hundred and seventy, I'm sorry, I had it open.
Three hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents.
How much did we get all together when we did that, like five hundred thousand or a million or what?
I don't know, well.
We will be used about, pelted out of it pro-year to pay for the Meals on Wheels, correct?
No, we don't transfer anymore, you, it's not a, uh, we're not paying for Meals on Wheels, it's however much you wanted to transfer, so you guys did.
How much, I missed that beat, how much did we transfer to them?
Was it sixty thousand one year?
That's right, was it thirty-one, thirty-one, thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand, it was thirty thousand in one year.
One year, I remember that.
It was thirty thousand.
I see what you're saying, so they get enough money, we're just paying for the offset.
If you want to.
More, out of the, but I mean, that's how we're doing it, we're just, we're, they get.
You have.
Yeah.
We have.
You're not, you're not continually.
The funds are designated to it.
Yeah, okay, supplement them, the difference.
We did help them out because during COVID, they did get a hard hit.
They did.
I thought it was, uh, we were paying for the whole program itself, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
No, they had lots of grants.
They do.
Lots of grants.
And then we're just deciding to pay for the offset of whatever else would they need. Which is good that we do.
The number that I came up with is thirty-three thousand, five ninety twenty-one.
For what?
The differences throughout the years?
Yep, five ninety twenty-one.
Total number of all the differences through the years.
Yep.
Just the general fund.
Just the general fund, not including your road.
Yeah.
Crew. So that would bring, if I figured that out, that would bring the budget down to, um, one point seven million, one point seven six five. Which would be a twenty-four dollar increase for taxes.
That's about two bucks a month.
Okay, so I think we can assume that, 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 that's probably pretty close to what the, it's gonna be the savings on the.
Road?
Road department, that's why, that's why I came with that sixty, seventy thousand. I think it's pretty close to that.
So what, what are your, what are your thoughts in transfer some of that COVID money into the, which department do you wanna transfer, you follow insane, what do you wanna do?
Or do you just wanna transfer that number, put in the, put it in the general fund and then take that number and offset the. Levy, that what we're trying to do, is that what you wanted to do?
The end result is the same, so it would go, the road department, the money that the road department has paid out in, in over and above. Health insurance costs would go as revenue this year into the road department. Which would then decrease levy. And the same thing with the, with the general fund. And what it would be doing is paying back those previous years for two thousand eighteen on. Right, and by, the minute, once we have arrived at where the budget's at, by doing this, we depress. Decrease the levy, which in turn gives the money. Back to the taxpayer, so we took that COVID, those COVID dollars out of the account and essentially handed them back to the taxpayer. If that's what you wanna do.
Okay, so that total would be, let's say for instance, the road is exactly the same as the county, it'd be sixty-seven, one eighty, forty-two. That would bring the budget to one point seven three one million, and that would be eighteen dollars and thirty-one cent.
But that would be just for the, that would be just for the, uh, health insurance, um, if you wanted to do the same for their retirement.
We do.
Do you know how much retirement, do we, do we have a guestimate dollar amount for retirement?
So, so, so then the same process would, would be for the retirement.
Couldn't we just kinda just? Pick a number and go as.
No.
No, but I mean, that's what I mean.
Trying to, you're trying to justify this.
No, I get what you, I get what you're saying.
Can we come back, can we, can we? Let Sam run the figures for actual figures, and then since you have to have this done by the eighth, right?
Well, okay, so.
Can we come back tomorrow?
We always, we can always go down, right?
That's, that's what I was thinking, is if I could crunch some numbers, get some stuff for you guys, you can't increase past this point, you can only decrease.
Okay.
But, but we're gonna have to send this out to this, to the.
For the estimated tax statements, and then in October you have your final, that's when your final budget is approved. But after estimated tax statements are sent out, you can only decrease past that point.
I think we want the estimated tax statements to reflect the. To reflect what we're act, what we're actually doing, I don't think it does much good to say here, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna tax you. A quarter million dollars more and then come October and say, no, we didn't, because by that time, the effect is for off, right?
Can we, can we come back tomorrow with the actual numbers then? Cause when you say it's the eighth and today is the fifth?
Or do we just have to pick a number at this time and then we can just make our following from there?
No, because the estimated tax statements are to the penny, those are, those are, yeah, and that's what everybody's gonna look at.
Well, that, that's why I was curious, like you said, you could take away, but I didn't know if we set a number that's higher and then take it away.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, when someone pays their taxes, it's not only the taxes that we levy, it's the taxes, the school levies, the taxes. So in order, and, and it comes to one number, we, we do the estimated tax statements in order to individualize. What we've done here, so that the citizens can know who is to, who are accountable to. So if their taxes go up in the county and down in the city, maybe their overall taxes stayed the same, but the county raised taxes, the city lowered them. The overall tax burden was the same, we wanna be able to let the citizens know how much we as a group are levying them.
I just didn't know if you could, like I said, say, hey, it's this, but, okay, well, our final number is this, cause we made some cuts afterwards. And then, but it's less. But I get what you're saying is you wanna give them a solid number, so they can come and pay their statement, especially like you said.
We, but we send them a statement, each individual taxpayer is gonna get a statement, and that's the, that's the, that's the. Point of the whole statement is to tell them what they're gonna, what we, what we did at this meeting, yeah.
The only scary part is that right now we're pulling in funds to cover things, COVID funds to cover things, and one year we're not gonna have them anymore to help cover. So you'd hate to break it down too far, because then it's a shocker to the people years later when it's like, jumps a whole, does that make sense? You know, I, I'd hate to knock it down too far, the next year we don't have anything to bring it sixty or seventy thousand dollars lower. Or, you know, or a hundred thousand dollars lower.
I get that, but I also get John's point of. Two, we're in inflationary crisis, let's try and keep it as low we can during the inflationary crisis and then make the adjustments from there, is that one argument you're making?
I'm always, I'm always just of the opinion that if.
Well, yeah, you want.
If we're holding, if we're holding dollars, their taxpayer dollars, they should have them in their hands.
I'm just throwing that out there.
I understand.
This will come, this, I just don't want this to come by this later and it's like, oh my gosh, we were able to run the budget at one point seven million, now we're at two point one with. All the changes we've done, but we don't have anything to bring it back down again, just for future food and thought, but.
I'll make sure you vote in November, we won't have to worry about it.
Yeah, but if we need specials or whatever, additional stuff, don't we still have to put that on for that?
Sure, I mean, there, there would be the, yeah.
Cause it, it doesn't cover the whole thing, so if there's any additional funds that we need to pay for something, we still have to get that from the taxpayers.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's all, and then that doesn't have any part of this budget process anyway, so that was, I think, it's pie in the sky. Here we go. Here we go. We, we don't know.
The Indy purse?
Yeah, so, so, and here's, so we, we know that, we know in the last two years, that it's went from sixty-four thousand to seventy. And we know that the retirement has went from fifty-two to sixty-one, so that's, in two years it's went ten thousand, if you extrapolate it, we're probably talking another.
One C what now? What P U? C seven B, we got too far.
But I mean, that's, that's just, that's just two, two years, that, that's just two years worth.
For twenty-three to twenty-four to twenty-five, it went from fifty-two to fifty-seven to sixty-one.
Right, so, but we'll have to, so I, I would assume that the, the purse is probably gonna be. If this is, if this, if this is the road department, it's probably at three, three again. Well, here, there's the salaries in the road department, where's the salaries?
So we went up a hundred and two thousand from last year's budget to this year's as of right this moment.
Right.
Okay.
So here, so let's just say this is, this is the health insurance. This is health insurance for a general health insurance for, for road here, let's just say they're the same.
Make it times two then?
So that'd be sixty-six, I bet that this purse in total is gonna be somewhere in the, in this, in this sixty range also. I, I would, I would estimate, I don't know for sure, so I, I think the total of this is gonna be.
Hundred and twenty?
I think so. I mean, that's real generic, but.
Sam's plugging away. As of right now, we're at a six percent increase from last year. Without this, without, that'd be a hundred and twenty, just, just with the sixty-seven thousand, one twenty.
Yeah, we think it's sixty-seven, and, and, and this number. From the road.
Yep, I got that in there. Or, oh yeah, I got that. Six percent.
This might do it. Add, add in another six, what is six percent? What, what do we need to get, no, what do we need to get down to three point two, which is another two point eight percent?
No, we put a hundred and twenty in here and we'll see.
That's gonna take a wipeout. Oh, it's a hundred and twenty-two instead of the sixty.
A hundred and twenty thousand brings you down to three percent, three point. Trying to increase my decimal, three point oh period. Two point nine six, did you wanna be exact? Or three point oh?
Let's see what this does.
Hundred and fifteen thousand of COVID funds brought in would bring down to three point three percent increase.
It's not bad, that's tolerable for a lot of people.
Which would be a nine dollar and seventy-seven cent increase in taxes, a hundred thousand dollars.
A lot of people break that down, like it's gonna cost them for a month, at least I do. What's this? What's this? Refresh my memories, Scott, on the sheriff's vehicle.
Well, didn't we transfer, there's thirty five grand in the account right now. And then we, didn't you guys transfer another fifteen thousand or something like that, right?
I thought we were gonna levy for another.
Twenty?
Twenty five, cause that's what we, we did last year. She just, and she made that, I don't know, she didn't correct that, but she said it didn't transfer right, but it was still, it was still supposed to be additional twenty five thousand to. To do it, so we had a total of sixty five in there.
Something like that.
Yeah. So we gotta, so she could order one on the, by the first or whatever, I remember talking about that.
Order before that, but at least long as we can get it for next year.
Cause it got miswrote, I remember her saying that.
You guys are levying enough to put sixty five thousand in that budget.
We did, okay.
Where's it at?
Yeah, where's this?
It's in there, it's just not.
That's what I thought. Cause it only says five thousand that are next to it, but I remember talking about it, and she was saying.
I see the pick up the dollar, be done again, I see. Again.
That when she can. Get approved and she can get ordered and have him, give him a check on the first or whatever.
Um, I'm stumped, um, I am.
Which one are you doing here?
The roads department's retirement, it, this was your baseline, and then this was in nineteen, this was in twenty, this is twenty one, that's twenty two. So the only one that it went up was between eighteen and twenty three. So I'm, I'm, I'm stumped. I'm trying to think of what happened, or why.
We had less employees, we went. We lost an employee, whatever year that.
That's that one. Okay. So we had, oh, yeah, cause we had Matt. Okay, so that's why it went down. When did Matt leave?
It was like twenty or twenty one, wasn't it? Same year.
Can you think of why it would go down from two thousand eighteen to? Twenty twenty?
I remember hearing about that.
Do you have, between two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty? What did we, what chain, I'm trying to think.
Did you hire in the, in that one of them, was he only there for a few years or was he there longer than that?
Did we have another employee that left?
Yeah, it's about thirty two.
So we got thirty two thousand?
It's thirty three.
What's the number?
But that, but.
How do you say health insurance?
Oh, it's right here, sorry, I have it right here. I just have to add those together.
Oh.
Um, I'm trying to think of. That's when we had.
Are you supposed to subtract these again, or is this just a?
No, they're just told, they just add these up, she got told, oh, my damn it.
Eighteen was the general fund.
Two thousand eighteen is when we got the main years, you know, and then.
Yeah.
So we only got three, and then I.
Yeah.
And he worked for a year or so.
Eight, in eight, when? Eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen is when we got the main years, and it reduced, you know, the workforce, but. He stayed on for a year and a half. And then he went to the elevator.
Cause retirement in eighteen was forty seven thousand, and then in twenty twenty, we paid forty four thousand.
I think in Patty Lee too, in twenty twenty, the support staff, that was the shared with extension and the treasurers in your office too.
Right.
So there was a chunk of time there too where we didn't have.
That, yeah, that's true.
So the twenty seven.
John.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I remember you got that, you had all time versions right away.
Yeah, I think so. And major off the wall, everything is that? Yeah.
Make a motion to. Prove the budget as presented.
And then all the way up.
I don't wanna make a motion, we don't have a final number yet.
I'm with you.
But the one zone's gonna have to come on together. Right. The one on the northeast side. Yeah. I. Real quick, um, is the elder?
I got a really silly quick question. So we have the seventy seven, fifty one, sixty seven, but actually the health insurances actually went down, right? So these actually went down, cause we had less people. I don't know what you said, me.
No, so here's a. So here's the baseline, two thousand eight, and it went up to sixty five, sixty three, sixty three, sixty one, sixty seven, so that's, those are the increases.
This is the fifty. Oh, this is the, this dollar, what is the difference between it?
I think, I think this is the difference between this and this.
Oh, so all as we had them. If you give me these bottom numbers.
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be subtracting fifty four. Five four, five seven.
Fifty two, D four.
Okay.
Do they itemize them, Sam, by employee, when they pay the PERS? Sure does. Yeah, well, that's how we're gonna have to arrive at it then, if we have different employees.
Yeah, that's what, I'm kinda confused, because, like, if we didn't have an employee. For, you know, four months. In your baseline, now your baseline isn't right, and then everything else is incorrect.
That's right.
And so it's kind of.
I got a different number than you did.
It's the top one.
Fifty seven, four ninety seven, fifty five, so let's, yep. Oh, but she's doing, from each to each, to each, it's actually thirty thousand, six oh one fourteen. I'm gonna take the top, take everything subtracting from the top.
From fifty seven thousand.
Fifty seven, four, ninety seven, yep.
Is the baseline, yeah.
Yep, so that's actually thirty thousand, zero sixty one, so the road department is.
What did you do? I'm confused.
Okay.
Cause it would be this number is your baseline, you would take that number, subtract this number to figure out the difference, which would be seven, seven, fifty one.
Right.
And then you would take this one, subtract this one, you would get that number.
Yeah.
You would take this number, subtract this number, you'd get that number.
That's right.
Take this number, subtracted this number, you get that number.
Yep.
And then you take this number, subtract that number, you get that number, so how did I get something different than what Steph got?
I don't know, I didn't mind it.
Is it what you got, is this what you got? What's this?
I got seventy seven for the top, and then it went to fifty eight.
Well, I don't know what that is, don't, don't know it's this.
Oh, that twenty seven is wrong.
Cause I got, but I got thirty thousand, six oh one, sixteen.
Thirty thousand, six oh one, sixteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I said.
That's what you did?
Six oh one, yep.
Okay, yeah, so that's the number, okay, so that's the same number I got, okay, cool. Just making sure I was doing that correctly, okay, but with your retirement, it, that.
Is that sixty three thousand, three fifty nine, oh four? Is that the ending number on this, on the third one down? Sixty three, three fifty nine, oh four.
Yes.
Okay, cause then I think. We're a penny different, so I've got thirty thousand, six oh one, fourteen. Which is a sixty four thousand, one ninety one, thirty five. Total, which brings the budget to one point seven three four, which is a hundred and five thousand dollar difference, and a six point one percent. And figure it out, it is eighteen dollars and eighty four cents tax increase on a hundred thousand dollar.
So we're a hundred and five thousand over yet?
Yep.
And if you wanna be. So, one six. Two eight. Thousand, zero, point nine, zero. So we wanna be a one six. There's three point two.
Yep, yeah.
That right?
Three point two percent of that?
No, that, that is.
Of last year's.
That is, that is an increase of three point two percent over last year.
Yep, but we're at six point one percent right now.
Right, so, so we're, what was the number, seven, one seven?
One, seven, three, four, five hundred, point ninety four, which is a hundred and five thousand, five thirty four difference.
And so we wanna be at this. And this will probably. Find that much more.
Fifty three thousand, four oh two, ninety seven. If you wanna be at the three point two percent.
We need to cut fifty thousand, you said, or we're at? Yep, we need, we need three, fifty three thousand dollars more of savings. Not gonna come for the PERS or not?
No.
We'll be, we'll be okay with six point one percent, yeah.
So?
No, because the PERS, well, I mean, depending on if you wanna go through it or whatever, because, like I said, the. The road department came in at, if you're gonna do that, it came in at a negative fourteen thousand, nine eighty one, nineteen.
You'd have to do it on an individual basis.
Yeah.
Okay, so, hang on here. I'm looking through here. Where was the sheriff's car? Make sure we got that.
I think last year we increased higher than three point two percent, didn't we? Went from one point.
We went from like one point four to one point six.
Yep.
Something.
That was, that was a bigger jump than what we're doing now.
Yeah.
Now we're trying to bring it down to be like a fifty eight thousand dollar difference.
Sheriff vehicle is.
Eight thousand dollar difference increase, when we increased it last year.
C fifteen.
That much more. That much more.
C fifteen. So you guys are putting in.
Where at?
C fifteen.
C fifteen. Okay.
Yeah, so you guys are putting in where we're living, uh, or doing another thirty thousand.
Point fourteen.
So it'd be.
Sixty some thousand.
Sixty-five thousand is in there. Cause you had ten thousand, you did a twenty-five thousand, so then now we're running another thirty. Which is sixty-five, yeah.
Yeah, last year we had a twenty-five dollar increase.
One twenty-four.
Taxes, a hundred thousand out of home.
Thirty-eight, seventeen.
We're down to eighteen.
Go to page, go to page B fifteen A.
B what?
B fifteen A. Okay, look at the reserve there halfway down, one seventy-seven, nine forty-one, fourteen.
Yep, got it.
If you reduce that to a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five thirty-eight, seventeen, it'll balance this.
How much can we, how much are we leaving in reserve though? What's legally up to you in there?
You don't have to leave anything.
There's an upper limit, there's not a, there's not a lower. And that's where, I mean, that's, we gotta be careful. I mean, a hundred and twenty-four thousand isn't much, that's all. But if you wanted to do that, we, we get to three point two. So the number would be one twenty-four, five thirty-eight, seventeen.
One twenty-four.
Five thirty-eight, seventeen.
Five thirty-eight, seventeen.
Is it a amount of increase that we make?
It's.
That would, that would put it, that would put.
We would increase it that much.
Original goal of three point two percent increase.
How much are we bringing in for COVID funds?
That's the question, yeah, how much?
Um, I had sixty-four thousand, one ninety-one, thirty-five.
So that isn't a real big dent in, or, we still have to do something with the seniors.
Transfer in.
They're not, never gonna make it to the end of twenty-five.
Say it one more time.
So.
Sixty-four thousand.
Sixty-four.
One ninety-one.
One ninety-one.
Point three-five.
So you're saying taking sixty-four thousand out of that, then sixty-four, or the. Reduce a hundred and se- hundred and seventy-seven thousand reserve down to a hundred and twenty thousand, is that what you're saying?
One twenty-four, twenty-four. And then the, whatever Stephanie had in the road department.
Thirty thousand, six oh one fourteen.
The sixty-four, one ninety-one, thirty-five, that is the general fund.
That's total. Yep, with the road department and the.
Okay, but we're just bringing that into the road department.
No, you gotta split.
Or, I mean, just in the general.
I am so sorry.
No, you're fine. No, but, but.
Two numbers.
Do you want, what number? Do you want the road department number or do you want the general, the general fund number?
Um, both.
Okay, the general fund number is thirty-three, five ninety, point two-one. The road department is thirty thousand, six oh one, point fourteen.
Okay.
There you go. I knew what you meant. You gotta put them in your certain spots.
Yep, yep, you're good. Okay, thirty-three, five ninety, point two-one.
Go ahead.
No, so we, basically we need three separate motions then, is that we need to get this figured out on, we're transferring or not?
No, I, I think it, I think it'll be the overall budget. You'll look at it and approve.
Okay, so we don't do any of this, we're just talking right now then?
Right, a- as long as everybody, we're, so we're putting it in there, then we'll look at the overall budget and we'll, we'll say if, is that the preliminary budget we approve? If that's all right?
Did you guys want to lower the reserve or leave it at one seventy-seven?
No, we've talked about going to one twenty-four or point twenty-five, leave it in there. Then it'll balance out. Be a three point two, correct.
In twenty-three, we, you know, we didn't, we got, we were really strapped. We didn't have anything in that reserve.
No, I know that, that's the issue. But, but just though, COVID, we still have quite a bit left in it for future.
Typically, we, we always ran like two hundred thousand dollars in there, but.
That's, I didn't say that about that.
Now you are living forty-four thousand, two forty-seven, thirty-seven over and above last year.
My question on that is, the reserve, where does some of that come from? Just leftover from other departments, stuff like that, or? How do we get money back in that reserve, like?
You'd have to levy for it.
You gotta levy for it.
Oh, you gotta levy for it. So like, let's say if we start getting low again, we would have to levy to bring it back up again?
You have to levy for it every year. It's in the general fund, so it reverts back to the over, it reverts back to the overall general fund. And then every year you put an expense for it into the expense side and that becomes part of the general fund levy.
So you just need to understand that when, with you decreasing your reserve, you don't have those funds for.
Emergencies later on.
Yeah, so like all these things of like, you know, the IT, well, if you go and spend your budget, you can come back. We do have reserves. We don't have that big of a reserve. You, you've now decreased it or, um, you know, I know that we used a lot of that reserve. Um, when Bob overspent the sheriff's budget, you know, there, then now we're having to increase the re- or the levy because of we spent that reserve number.
It's not a problem if we maintain fiscal responsibility and don't deviate outside the budget during the normal regular year. It's when we start deviating outside the budget, somebody comes in, I want this and this and this, we say yes, then the reserve is. But, but that's really not what it's for. We're supposed to budget for the whole year.
Yeah, and then to backtrack then, maybe I say, you have your own reserve for the road department, correct?
He's got a, he's got a million dollar reserve in the operating fund of the road department.
Yeah.
And, and in the special fund of the road department, there's gonna be three million dollars. So there's.
Because of the prairie dog thing.
Uh, when the prairie dog comes, there's two point two six in there now. When the prairie dog comes in, if it comes, it'll be three million dollars. There's. And of course, that three million dollars in that fund is to offset federal estate fund. So really, that, that's a lot, there's a lot of money there when you start using twenty, thirty percent of it.
So it's not a huge, huge different, uh, deal that we have to rob from it a little bit, as long as we just.
No, we didn't rob from that.
No, 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 the, the reserve.
Well, it is.
It is, but.
It is, it, it's. But. Looking at this way, you're, you're. It's less money available, but it's a people's money that we're giving back to them right now. To pay that babysitter or to pay the, whatever it might be, the less money they pay, the more money they have in their hand, in their pocket. And it, it's, the money is better off in that person's hand than in the, in the bank account for the colony, as far as I'm concerned. There's nothing wrong with frugality in a, in a government entity.
I, I get what you're saying, I just.
If, if the colony's wealthy, the taxpayers are broke. If the colony's frugal, the taxpayers have more money in their hand. It's because it, one comes from the other. It, it's.
You could do that, yeah.
So, how do we, do we gotta? Make a motion on this then, or how do we?
In the end, we'll need a motion to approve your preliminary budget.
Is there any way of getting him any more hours? Any place else you can rob to make it work?
Not after we did what we just did here. If, if we just, then we just took money from.
I know, that's a problem.
Right? I mean, that's why I waited to bring this up until we were, no, not, not after we, we did just here. Cause that's, in, in essence, we took then those COVID dollars and, and used them for something else.
I don't know.
Start the whole process over again if you want.
No, no. So what's our final number increase, twenty?
Forty-four thousand.
Forty-four thousand.
Right at that three point two that you.
That we all kinda figured to agree on type of deal.
Yeah, forty-four thousand, two forty-seven, thirty-nine over and above last year. So you're living one million, six seventy-two, two eighteen, twenty-six.
And that encompass raises for everybody. That encompass basically keeping everything the same in all the departments. The road department's fully funded, the sheriff's department's fully funded. There is, there isn't, there weren't any cuts made to anything.
But nobody's getting anything, any extra type of deal.
Well, I mean, there was, there was raises.
But I mean, like, in actual, like, department spending, like, there wasn't a, any additional.
Jeff didn't get his hours he would have liked to have.
Yeah, but nobody else got any other increases on top of that.
No, I mean, there was, no.
So in twenty twenty-four, we raised the budget a hundred and seventy-eight thousand in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Just, just.
Yeah.
Number wise. I only worry, I am good with however you guys wanna do this budget. I'm fine with that. I just wanna be, stay this again, that. Cut, we gotta lower this year, only brought up forty-five, fifty thousand, but the worry is next year when we don't have the funds to bring these things down, what are we gonna then do? And then it's gonna shock the people, cause then it's gonna end up jumping up super high. Unless we can keep bringing the COVID funds in.
No.
Sixty thousand at a time until it's gone.
I'll tell you what we do, we spend less money. That's the whole purpose of a budget. There, there, you make the serious decisions and you make the cuts where they're least felt, is how it works. Again, not, not any different than your farming operation or your house or any other thing. If, if you don't have the money, you don't have the money.
The only, the only problem is that sometimes you have to put investments back in the equipment and stuff in the farm. You know what I'm talking about, John? You know, if you don't do that, you have nothing.
Yeah, no, I, no, I understood, but I mean, no one can, no one can live outside their budget.
No, I, I understand.
Because eventually, and if we're, in essence, if the overall dollars coming into Griggs County only increase by three percent and we increase budgets by twenty percent, the, the end result, of course, is failure. If you're spending more than you're taking in, you're gonna fail and we're spending the taxpayers' dollars. So we're spending more of their dollars than they're bringing in. It's gonna lead to more pain and suffering for the taxpayer. After all, that's who we're here to protect.
So, okay.
But up to you guys. There's, there's where, there's where it can be at. Yeah, I would.
Well, then I'll make that.
Like it less than that.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
So Sam, could you read off the, the dollar amount?
Yes.
Forty-four?
Forty-four, two forty-seven, thirty-six.
We have a motion by Avriel to increase the levy for the two thousand twenty-five budget across all departments in the amount of forty-four thousand, two forty-seven, thirty-six. This is reflective of the three point two percent increase we settled on at the start of this budget process. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tranby. This will be a voice vote due to the fact that it's dollars. Aye to the positive, native and negative. Avriel?
Aye.
Tranby?
Aye.
Zorn?
Aye.
Edlin?
Aye.
Wakefield votes aye. Budget approved.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Tranby to adjourn.
We have to, it fits your business or not? Yeah, we should probably do future business.
Okay, future business.
What, what, what do we need for next meeting, I guess? I suppose, nothing.
Old court, new course, of course.
Yeah. More information on that than just basically standard meeting after this then? Standard meetings?
The state will probably have something on sales tax ratio then for us.
Yep, we'll have to address that, that, that.
Put that on there too, just like this, so.
I mean, we'll just have to address it when it comes. That's all there is to it. Does your motion to adjourn still stand?
Yeah.
Motion, what, to adjourn for Tranby's second?
I'll second it.
It's second by Avriel, all in favor, say the party by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned. Twelve fifty P M. Next meeting, this chamber's August nineteenth at nine thirty A M. Thank you all.